So we stand and pray and pray, Scott, our heavenly father, as we quiet our hearts and come before you today, we want to thank you for all these many blessings and light. Heavenly father, you pray that I pray that you give us the knowledge to make the right decisions for our county. I pray for our safety of our employees, law enforcement, first responders, all of that we have, Lord, that's serving mineral county. I just asked you to put your hand upon them and God damn, now, Lord, give us the knowledge we need and we give it glory in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're called meeting to order, three commissioners is here. And before we go into anything else, we have AJ here for with. See who's all up there. We've got Bob and Beau up here, so you, who wants to start this with the, the building at health department? Bob, you have anything to share?
Yes, sir, I can do that. What we are asking for is an amendment to our engineering agreement to construct and administer the construction for the health department building annex. We, what I've been told are at the end of our budget for engineering and architectural services. And what we are asking for is to take the remaining line items that are in the budget now and move those to engineering and architectural services. Our amendment amounts to about sixty seven thousand dollars. And from what I've been told in the budget, there is fifty six thousand dollars available. The, the purpose of this amendment, what, what our tasks would be involved with that would be reviewing the contractor's pay estimates over the next year. Soil compaction testing that has to be done as the site is developed. Various construction progress meetings that we typically have one a month, sometimes more. Travel to and from the site, not only for our office here in Charleston, but also for our inspector coming from Winchester, Virginia. The big one is reviewing shop drawings and some metals for equipment that will be proposed to be used to be, to build the facility. Phone calls and emails with the owner, the architect, region eight, the county commission. Also any change orders or requests for information made by the contractor. And on top of all that, as you probably are aware, the architect ZMM works as a subcontractor to us. And so we also pay their fees as part of this amendment. Our original agreement was, that was signed back in September twenty two. We took, at the time, we knew we were taking a reduced fee. We, we did that at the request of Region Eight because they weren't sure that the amendment or the grant was going to be sufficient to cover the cost of the project, which we found as we bid at the first time, it was not. And so that's, that's basically what we're asking for. If you, if you don't agree to this, we still stick to our original agreement and, and can we just work with the, the money that we have left, which we, we have about thirty four hundred dollars left in our contract right now. So we're really just asking for your consideration for this.
Anything to share?
I mean, my, my concerns with it is, is one, we've signed a contract as far as what, you know, the work that's to be done. You know, we haven't even gotten into the project yet and it's gone. So I, you know, I have concerns with that. I know with some other projects, even with Hampshire, I think they've run into some issues. I have concerns about, you know, where the cost may be and that fifty six thousand dollars could be put back into construction and utilized there for any overages or anything that we would have there. Again, we do have a contract in front of us that was already signed.
You guys can send to share?
I'm in agreement with Beijing. They already signed a contract on this. We can use the money elsewhere.
Me too.
I agree too.
So you want to share these? Women, share these?
I don't think it's.
I didn't. That's why I asked. Okay. Well, I'll tell you, Bob, the way it looks right now, I would like as much as possible, stick to the contract we've got. So we'll take it in consideration when everything's done again, but as it stands right now, we're going to, they want everybody, we should stick with the contract. Okay?
All right. Thank you for consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Beau, did you have anything to add? It's all the world areas.
Just to, to add, yes, the original contract was that, but there was additional work that had to be done because the job did have to go back out to re-bid. And that's where kind of some of the fees, he had to come up with new proposals. I think three different estimates or something that they said he had to come back up with. So things did, did happen in the project that wasn't under the original scope of the project. That's why the money has gotten used. And that's just for your all's knowledge to why he's asking for more money.
Beau, as far as the three different cost estimates, he did it within five minutes in front of me. It wasn't him. It was DMM. The program did it pretty much right then and there. It wasn't the full scope as far as them having to do a full set of plans or anything like that. It was literally just doing a concept drawing. So I don't see where that would warrant sixty seven thousand dollars. And at the most, as far as the rebid, the rebid or the bidding process in the first package was only three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just throwing a little more information out there that the commissioners might not have known.
No, but I mean, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I do. I do. But yeah, like you said, he has, I know it's an original contract, but I have a whole another year of pay estimates and everything like he discussed. So that is a lot of stuff. It is just, it is totally up to you guys. The original contract was signed. And I'll stand by with whatever the commission decides.
All right. Anybody got anything to say on this issue? Nothing. All right. Thank you both for being on there.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Did you have any other updates on the project? Then later in the agenda, but.
No, I mean, that's pretty much it. Right now, we're just waiting for for the contractor to actually give us a start date. It was supposed to be this week, but it's got pushed off a little bit.
I do think you all need to have an official motion in the minutes that you're. Thinking was to. Yes, because I will get.
I make a motion. We deny the testist's request for more money on the contract and the amendment.
And I approve that also.
Okay.
Hey, Beau, could you give me a call here shortly when you get off this meeting?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
I got a song.
I'm down right here. All right. American Red Cross.
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners, mineral county staff and guests. My name is Jason Keeling. I'm the executive director for the American Red Cross of Allegheny Highlands Chapter. And I'd like to introduce Eric Rigginland, who is a board member from here in Kaiser. He's been a board member for roughly seven, eight months. And we greatly appreciate his volunteer service. I'm here to give you a little information about the service delivery that the Red Cross does, particularly some numbers from the entire year of twenty twenty four. And I appreciate you being willing to recognize March as Red Cross Month, which is a tradition that's happened from federal to local levels for, for decades, in fact. And as far as the service that's done in this county from the Red Cross, in terms of our blood collections, last year in twenty twenty four, we collected one thousand one hundred and eleven units of life-saving blood at thirty eight blood drives. And I was speaking with Commissioner Leatherman before the meeting, and he told me that he's approaching twenty five gallons of donations. So that's amazing. Personally, I'm only at three, and the reason I'm wearing this is because I actually myself donated today, so I walk it like I talk it.
Mine's thirsty.
Okay, sounds good. But we appreciate everyone in this county who is donating and helping in a variety of, of ways. And in fact, right now, at the American Legion in Kaiser, we have a blood drive going on until six o'clock. But there are other opportunities in the community as well at the Burlington Fire Department on March the twenty seventh, at the Elk Garden Assembly of God on April the twenty first, at the Mineral County Technical Center on April the twenty ninth. And those are just some of the more recent ones. Those will continue on throughout the year. Again, we had thirty eight in the county last year drive. And we're just grateful to those organizations that actually partner with us to allow us to have drives within their space to the people that come out and volunteer their time and actually make blood donations and, and all those who aid in those efforts. And just while I'm on the, the call and in this meeting, I want to let interested donors know, how do you actually donate? You can do a couple of things. You can download the Red Cross Blood Donor App. You can visit redcrossblood.org or you can call wait one eight hundred REDCROSS. All you do is put in your zip code, any of those means, and it'll tell you where the drives are at and help you to get scheduled. But again, personally, the app and the, the website are particularly helpful. Now moving on to other lines of service, we do have a line of service called Service to the Armed Forces. And last year in this county, we provided eleven case services. That's primarily where we act as the emergency communications organization when an active duty service member is somewhere else in the world or, or maybe the country, and they have a local emergency with their families often, we're responsible for verifying that and basically saying to the US military, that person should be relieved from duty for a period. That's one example of our, our, our service to the armed forces. And again, our primary one. Last year in the county of Mineral, we, our disaster cycle services team members assisted seven households with recovery services in the aftermath of a disaster. The most common disaster that we respond to are home fires, right? In the event that there is a flood, certainly something we're familiar with in West Virginia, we're also responsible, you know, for helping respond to those type things. But again, that hasn't happened in this community, at least for some time. But those home fires are something we are still responding to. And our disaster volunteers, you know, they're, they're there to ensure that, as we call them, clients, the people that are affected have their immediate needs met, that they have shelter, clothing, food, replacement of any lost medications, eyeglasses, emotional support, all those things are provided to them at no cost. We seek to be the best part of what could arguably be, arguably be someone's worst day and help them to make a plan for recovery. And we do want to thank Mineral County Emergency Management, Mr. Luke McKenzie and his team for keeping us apprised of when an event does happen so that we can reach out to those affected and, and offer again that disaster, that immediate disaster assistance. And then lastly, we're glad that in Mineral County, we were able to train ninety one people in CPR and first aid coursework to help ensure that community members are better prepared in the event of a medical emergency. So that's all for me at the moment. I don't know if the clerk might be kind enough in a moment to, to read the proclamation, but before we do, what's that? Okay, sounds good. But before we do that, perhaps if you have any questions for me, I'll do my best to, to answer them.
The letter is, the next page, and I understand you're also asking for a two thousand dollar donation.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. Absolutely, yes. That's just something, you know, as we go out to counties throughout the state, we do make that ask. It's really just an invitation. It's a way to help fund the service delivery. You know, we are funded by public dollars and we are a nonprofit. So those, those funds will go to provide those services directly to people impacted, again, you know, in this county.
Got any question?
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
I'll read this proclamation. I know a lot of it you went over.
Yes, absolutely.
As I, because I was kind of glancing down through she did, but, but this March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing compassionate acts of people in Mongolia, county. And by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Carla Barton founded the American Red Cross more than a hundred and fifty years ago, generations after generations have stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best humanitarian in times of crisis. It's a noble mission and the volunteer blood donors, donors and supporters who now give back to the American, the Allegheny Highlands Chapter. Excuse me, I'm getting loose my voice. The Allegheny Highlands Chapter remains unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in face of today's emergencies. During twenty twenty four in Mineral County, the American Red Cross assisted seven households impacted by disasters, collected a hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand one hundred and eleven units of blood at thirty eight blood drives, provided life-saving training to ninety one people and supported multiple military members, veterans and their families with case services. These volunteers, volunteer area, these volunteers in generous contributions shine, shine beacon of hope people's darkest hour. Whether it's delivering shelter, food or comfort during the disaster, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members, veterans and their families, saving lives with first aid, CPR, AEDs and other skills for, for delivering international aid and recovering, reconnecting loved ones separated by global, global crisis. This work to uplift our community is made possible by those who answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby acknowledge this month of March twenty twenty five in honor of, of their remarkable service and ask others to join in their commitment to care for one another. Therefore, the Mineral County Commission recognizes Red Cross Month in honor of those who led with their hearts to serve people in need. And we welcome others to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. And that is the proclamation. And can I make a personal statement, sir?
Please.
I would encourage people to give. I know I give as regularly as I can. And I'll tell you, the next day or two, I feel like I've had an energy shot. I, I, I know everybody don't feel that way, but I do. And I really enjoy giving. I think I got three more times and I'll hit the twenty five gallon mark. I think it's what I mean. Thirsty is one of those times.
So you'll be donating on Thursday?
Thursday in Burlington.
Okay. Very cool.
So I didn't want to address this.
You just want to make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Okay, make a motion. We accept this proclamation.
That's okay.
And I approve that also.
And he did want a picture with you all.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion. We give him two thousand dollars.
Second, and I'll just.
You want that out this year's money or next year's money?
You need it now?
I'll take it if you, if you'd be so kind. This festival year would be great. Awesome. Well, I'll be in touch with the clerk's office about that. I greatly appreciate that. And I want to say I'm sorry I had a typo in the first line of the. That's on me. So I apologize. Too many counties with Ms. in, in, in West Virginia. So, but, but again.
You wanted a picture too.
Yes, please. That'd be great. Just over there. And we'll get Eric and myself and the commissioners. And we'll post that on our, on some of our activities to promote what we're doing.
Oh, it's, oh, it's.
You get a song in your head? All right. Everybody ready?
Thank you all. Your pleasure.
Watching the commission meeting.
What's that? Yes.
I couldn't. I was watching live streaming.
You want to just wait a little minutes later or you want to do?
I'll start later.
Okay. All right. Now we'll look at our agenda. You want, you have anything?
I'm sure there was. Okay. So I'm working backwards minutes to the fore. So let's, three sets are done. So all the correspondence were added accents that was emailed to you and the letter to under commission order correspondence. And I don't know that anything was, yes, we can have any salaries from nine one one. Yep, system for nine one. I forget what's on your.
I think it was on the original, but it might have been hit. I'm not sure.
And then, of course, I thought that after I sent out the first agenda that I missed a suitor hearing to six o'clock.
Everything that was added was on the email Jim by Friday.
Yeah, so I was bouncing it back and forth.
Do I have a most approved agenda? So moved.
I can.
And I approve that also. We'll hold off the minister a little later since we got so much more on the scene. And it's almost five o'clock. Fountain Public Service, Don Parker resigned. Of course, we, we knew that from the last meeting. Okay, we reported that at the last meeting. And Dutch Stags has submitted a letter. He would like to serve on the Fountain PSC. So we'll address that in a little bit. West Virginia Health and Radiation Machine.
Natural certificates here, I didn't copy, but it'll be posted where he will be posted.
And.
You can actually leave that open.
We've got a, we've got a credit here from the regional jail of six hundred and forty three dollars, fifteen cents. So, did you do this one? The, that's for the health. I didn't read it. I was just, what you need, pardon the health, radiation machine.
It's for the X-ray machines.
And then we're going down. We had a letter here from North Roman.
It was to North in response to an executive session.
Oh, that's that one we had with, what's his name?
I didn't get it out while I was out of town. Then I got it.
Did you, anything in there you want to share or?
No, it's just trying to do a meeting set up between North and.
I'm certainly with the letter that you sent to all the fire departments, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the credit from the jail goes back into general?
Well, when we get the actual monthly invoice, then we make that adjustment right off of it. Yeah.
Okay, board departments. Fountain Public Service. I'll make a motion. We point Dutch Stags to deposition.
I second.
Yeah, you good with that?
I'm staying.
I wondered what you was thinking when they put that letter in, but that's all right. All right. Update on courthouse annex.
Um. I know I have stuff. The sheriff had requested a quote on countertops. I don't even know that I've shared it with him, but it did come for, at the last building commission meeting to get a twelve inch extension. Is that what you had asked for?
Okay. I was down to the itch neither.
So I put that in your, the quote is two thousand five hundred ten dollars and twenty three cents.
I don't know if it's needed that bad.
That's, that's cheaper than they initially told me.
Because the counter, the countertop itself is one thousand six hundred and sixty three dollars. But then after you add the labor, overhead and profit and bond and B and O tax is twenty five hundred dollars. Sorry, I forgot to even share this with you. I got it. Put it in the folder and.
And mind you, that is the only, the only quote we got. I mean, it may be.
Well, there's Fair Chance has to install it, right?
Yeah, Fair Chance does the install, yeah.
They have to install it.
Well, no, anyone can do it.
Can our guys do it?
Oh, no, not what they're doing.
Then anybody can't do it.
No, but like any kitchen installer can do it. But I don't think what they're doing, our guys should do.
Right now, everything would match up with my, every brand stuff would be.
Does that include installation of it?
Yes. Yeah, that's material labor. That's, that's total all in.
What you thought, Ken?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve it. I second it. And that comes out of the contingency. Is that correct? How is the building?
Yeah. But we got a contingency. I didn't cover that with you the other day.
And I approve that also. Anything else you got for courthouse?
Yes, I spoke to Cardinal. They finished up at nine one one center. They're probably going to be coming to start decabling the courthouse, not next week, but the week after. Supreme Court did come and do some very basic pulls in some places that they weren't going to be able to get to in Lawrence, well, Lawrence, although they went ahead and did those initial pulls because they had to be done before the drywall went up. I did have a meeting with Supreme Court last week or the week before. They are going to re cables the first two floors of the courthouse for us. However, they need us to make paths because right now, like if someone needed a new cat six and there's a sewer pipe through the brick, we just like run one here, here and here, and as many as you can fit around the sewer and then as many as you can fit around the water. And so they'd like us to drill some actual holes. So I believe Fair Chance that we could use the tools, but our guys will have to do it. So we are going to make some paths, but they'll, it's very important we do it at their cost. I mean, then Cardinal will be decabling.
How big is usually?
That we need to drill or? But they're in break this thick. That's, that's the problem with everything in that building. Everywhere you go, you're going through break this thick. So we're going to look at, we're going to look at that. One of the things, the phones were obviously just cabled. And my initial thought was to leave it. However, if the guys are going to have access to the tools they need and they can make a correct path, we'd be, because the Supreme Court will pull new phone, we'd be further ahead to run everything through centralized trunks rather than leaving the phones the way we have them. So there's some details I got to work out with Doug, but the only cost that would be added is I'd have to buy a couple of boxes of the white cable. Supreme Court will pull it, but right now the phone, they did the same thing wherever it would fit. But if we're going to decable and re cable and have central trunks for data, we might as well run all the phone through there too. So I'm going to look and see how feasible it is. And I'm going to go with Doug to get those holes drilled, but Supreme Court did say they were going to re cable and Cardinal, I'm hoping. I think they said they were practicing courthouse or something next week, but they're going to come do the week after.
Is that like three inch or four inch hole to drill for?
We probably need four inch because you're talking, I mean, huge ton of cable, but we got to figure out how many drops are one each office. It's like the way the offices are being used now, it's just different how it's ever been. So like, as many drops might not be needed, but they need printers everywhere. So. Well, no, Krista doesn't have individual printers. So there are some details to work out. There's a lot of people involved.
Even though Krista only has one printer if she doesn't run for a time. Even though Krista only has one printer, if she doesn't run for time, for that position again, will be next one, more, more different printers?
Well, it's the Supreme Court who pays, like, who does it?
Okay.
So, the individual PC printers, they just have to set up one block. And actually, Supreme Court wouldn't even run the third floors for the other side, cuz they couldn't fit, um, if we can get it to fit, that's probably what we'll have them do, but.
There's just a plan for this future, I guess.
Yes. Yeah, and then we've gotta figure out, like, a finalized plan for the prosecuting attorney this week, cuz he'll have to run off our networks in the courthouse annex. Um, but that's, uh, like, we can't re cable this section, cuz this third floor is not gonna redo them, cuz he's our responsibility, he's not a network volunteer, um, so there's some nothing's ever simple, and even if we pull all the phone, it's not gonna change the fact that fire and security still run through whatever holes, so.
Well, some of the cables are up there, can't they? On the really old cable?
On the third floor, they won't even touch the third floor, cuz there's no one up there that's their responsibility, so they won't do anything.
Oh, no, the people you have is pulling the cable, they all cable, wow.
Oh, yeah, they can, yeah, they're gonna pull whatever, oh, they're gonna tone and pull whatever they can get out of there, so, and for the most part, I think some of the newer stuff's color coded, but yeah, the ceilings are just a, a train rack, so, it's gonna be, that part of things is gonna be interesting, and try to get everyone's schedules coordinated, and the last year of my mission, I spent two weeks, so there's no way I can have done it in two weeks, so we're, we're gonna shoot for a month. Um.
Is your completion date pretty much on your schedule?
We're looking at July, according to last building commission meeting, but they say July seventeenth. So, I figure August, um, and then the last big part of the project will be that we'll need, we need to get that the probation point down, cuz that'll be an important part, so we can get the parking lot into service, which will relieve a lot of headaches.
Do you have any idea about the grant, about the, uh, sharing of the national?
Oh, no, I, we haven't even started looking at it, cuz I don't wanna do that until.
I know, but there's a reason why I asked, we need to give one party a pretty difficult.
Yeah, as we get closer to dates, uh, I have an idea, I don't, I wouldn't even wanna begin to schedule right now, because if we schedule for August, and then something big comes up and you end up not finishing till October, I hate to.
Yeah, I get that. So, the probation office wants that stored in, and then you can get all the handicap stuff in the outside.
Oh, no, that's before that, the handicap thing just has to be done before the project's done.
Okay.
Yes, the ramp, yeah, that will be taken care of, the, the ramp that's out front of the courthouse is not the permanent solution. Um, that, that was a temporary fix, yeah, no, there's a, there's a peninsula that comes off into the sidewalk that will have the handicap access. Um, but that's just not then, there's also some street digging that's gotta be done, we're waiting on that.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
On the courthouse sewer or anything, or?
That's the street digging, oh, no, the sewer, they're looking at that too, they, they do not have pricing force on that, they did say that D and D did a walkthrough the Monday of the building commission meeting, so they were, they were gonna work on that change order as well.
Hey, and did you get with, uh, someone in class about that window that's missing in the front, yeah? My old window. Replace.
I have not, it's on my list, but I have not, but it's part of the original favorite, yes, I've got, I've got a written ID from them on that. Right, I was waiting for the power, and then I guess the power's taken care of, I just had.
Or they start looking much in that room, then.
Yeah, yeah, I will, um, put that on my list to get that scheduled.
Right, how about?
Dugouts, they build dugouts everywhere, um, so all the dugouts will actually be finished this week. So, both softball, both softball field, the junior league field, both little league fields now have dugouts, um, that's shoot, that's what we got going on in parks, I think.
All right, update on the CB, CDBG grant, uh, the health department.
Oh, I don't even know, I don't even remember the day. She's got over a hundred and fifty kids registered, um.
Of April?
Schedule clerk window replaced. Hold on, I can just look at her website, you don't have to text her. Parks does have a new website with all of their stuff on it for upcoming events and things, April nineteenth from eight to twelve at the Kaiser Pole.
Yeah, fishery, right?
Yep, and we, we've already got over a hundred and fifty kids registered, so, it's gonna be a a busy event, they've got some bicycles to give away, several hundred dollars in fishing equipment.
In the pool.
In the pool.
Yeah, and the fish, don't call it the first people go swimming, has, that's, that's.
It's quarantined water?
No, not quarantined.
Oh, the city of Kaiser, that's one of the reasons they struggle to keep up with that pool, is cuz the water actually gets recycled, it gets new water constantly. So, they drain the pool, we refill it.
Fish will be in the pool.
Apparently, Grant County does it, and it's a huge success every year, so.
I think it worries watching.
What was the timing of that again?
Cash really hard, cuz you kept somebody on the other side.
Especially a hundred and fifty of them, that's what you tie.
April nineteen.
Eight to twelve.
Yeah, April nineteen, so it's twelve, I'm just kidding. Um, under CDBGCV, I do have a drawdown that Beau sent over. Um, I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
I just got a check, um, yesterday, it was for, I guess, fourteen of them.
Yeah, let me. Oh, boy. Yeah, fifteen, and it is just for actually, the whole drawdown probably from a hundred and fifty dollars, looks like. Yeah, a hundred and fifty dollars, I don't know, this was worth sending to us. It's the CDBGCV, and a hundred and fifty, I think, so. Uh, it's all, no, it's for the EP, I sent them the invoice, it's for the, um, storm water, more of it.
Okay, you got anything, I don't know when they're gonna have groundbreaking, but, the company that first started around the middle of March, as it started, so I don't know what, AJ don't know what's up on that either, so he's checking. Uh, opioid funding, updated.
I don't have much, contacted everybody that we awarded the last meeting, and I got signed contracts and W nine from, and they're actually in my printer at the house, no, sorry, bring them, give them that work, so they get checked out. There was a couple that I mentioned from the last meeting that I gave you papers on, that you get those checks out.
Worked on some of them.
Okay.
Creative living and.
Yeah, creative living, or, yeah, creative living legacies or something, and. Got Margaret, got the car, we met, we met up the poor dealership with the van, and they found the van, and we got that, got some pictures up there, and they have picked up the van, and um, TPM, hand delivered TPM their check, and school board, that one's a school board.
So I have to go to my printer for community of schools?
Yes, yeah, we need to create schools, that's, of course, that's one of this.
Okay, I'll just email that to you tonight.
I had update on the war, moral, but then in courthouse, they, they does that. Travel policy.
Nothing on that yet either, cause.
Yeah, the, uh, beach festival, electoral.
Don't, don't have anything on that, hit a snag with the car prices, cabling, and Kirby's working on some other funding.
Alright, uh, the sheriff estimate for the showers.
Um, two that I contacted didn't get back to me, but we did have one D and D that is scheduled, hopes that they would be here sometime this weekend.
For, for, uh, estimate, yeah, okay, good deal, rank promotion increase.
Basically, back on, uh, seeing the approval uh, for the rank promotional rank increase, hopes in order to get, start getting the right structure built back into the department where it needs to be. Um, basically, working off the same number that we presented before, we was roughly twenty-nine thousand dollars to bring the individuals up to where they need to be in order for the promotions to take place, and newly promoted individuals, whether it be lieutenant or sergeant, wouldn't be making more than what the current lieutenants and sergeants are making.
The new which coming on is gonna be making more than the current ones?
Without this rank promotional increase, if we were to promote somebody today, they would be making almost the exact same amount as somebody, say, if you promoted Roger to lieutenant today, he would be making almost as much as what Lieutenant Letterman has being a lieutenant for actually four, is it more, okay, well, there you go. Due to how the base pays have increased over the years.
Cuz me and Roger's almost exactly the same years, so we're ba- with base pay and annual wage increases, we're exact. So, and actually, you're getting promoted, well, if he tested what we're waiting to.
Yeah. So.
How does that work if, if they're the same rank, but he'd be making more, I mean, I don't understand how.
The way the rank, if you didn't tell us, please.
Absolutely.
The way the rank structure was set up twenty years ago, we did a five hundred increase for, like, DFC, and, and these numbers could be off by five hundred, but I believe this is correct. A thousand for corporal, maybe fifteen, or, or, and, and Lauren, you, you may know, I think.
Five hundred, one thousand, two, three and four, two, three and five.
Well, it's, I thought it was two, three and three, but nonetheless, so that was set up like twenty years ago, and at the time, like, when you said, like, uh, you know, a three thousand dollar pay increase, or a two thousand dollar pay increase, it's like, wow, that's a lot of money, that's what we was making thirty thousand dollars a year, now it's becoming like I'm sort of, it's coming up, it's becoming insignificant, like, a five dollar pay increase, it's like, well, thanks, but you know, that is, I just made five dollars more a week. And I'm not, just, that's facts, uh, so we were trying to get it instead of based on a set amount, to a percentage of the base salary, so, that always increased. So twenty years from now, it'll be more, but it'll be based on the base salary of the starting deputy then, does that make sense?
Could we?
So it's a fluid number, it doesn't stick, it's, it's based on a percentage of the starting salary of a deputy.
And then also puts up in rank.
And, and as, as time, as time carries on, that number changes, and, and, cuz it stays the same in fifty years. It's gonna be, oh, you get five hundred dollars, which is equivalent of getting a twenty dollar pay raise a year, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mentioned, could we, could we take, uh, one day and sit down with you and kind of get a list of what this, cuz if this is the case, and this is, if I misunderstood you, please tell me. But if, and I don't mean, I want you to understand this, if a new guy that's younger than you, I'll, I'll use you for an example. If a guy younger than you, has been there for two years less, takes the lieutenant test and passes it, he could make more money than somebody's been in their.
So if it was implemented without prorating the people that's there, what one hundred percent will happen, not could, is you have, and I'm going to use, I'll use Nick Wilson, I don't think he would mind, as an example, he's been there. Is, is he, I don't think he's eligible to test for sergeant yet. You have to be eight years to test for sergeant, six years for corporal, ten for lieutenant, you've all committed, nonetheless. I think you'll have no problem, so what would end up happening, Nick, who, I've got twenty-four years of, uh, um, service, and Nick's got seven. What would end up happening is a you will potentially have ten and twelve year people making more, significantly more than twenty, twenty-five year employees.
How much progress does that cost?
Well, well, and I'll just say this for myself, uh, I mean, I, I'll use this as an example. How would it make the commissioners feel if they said, okay, you guys' pay rate's the same, the next elected commissioner makes eighty thousand a year? Okay, I know I agreed to work for, I work for, but that's kind of a morale killer, and
It is, that's what, uh.
And it hurts your long-term employees that have experience, kinda get this wrong.
Well, this is gonna cause issues.
And then if you put that into play, and just like, uh, Sergeant Sherr said, if that were the case, he's gone. Well, I don't have anybody to fill his position.
So, another.
He would leave, I would have nobody to fill his position.
The way it sounds, we should reject this.
I think it needs looked at and talked about, maybe, maybe in an executive, or I, I think that would be more appropriate, and actually look at real numbers instead of just speculating. Yeah, well, we have, we have a sheet with numbers on it, we've had a sheet, and we talked about this at one of our budget meetings, and I thought we was all on the same page, we're pretty well decided that any of those raises, we would hold off until after the end of the year, and after this fiscal year, and see what kind of actual carry we have for whether our budget is really tight this year. And I, I don't think we're opposed to that, but I, I, I don't think we wanna table it, but I think, I, I completely understand, about looking at it next fiscal, I, that's, I completely understand.
Well, I'd like to get with, with some of your guys, and sit down and go with this and.
And we just wanted you all to understand.
Cuz I don't want nobody, we don't want to describe.
How things work, and if it works one way, it's actually going to create it.
Animosity.
A lot, yeah, I mean, I would feel, well, you know, twelve, I don't know, we just kinda make you feel, well, it's gonna hurt.
That's, that's gonna kill me, right, for the older guys, that is.
Right.
So.
It's the same thing that happened with animal control, when we are hiring somebody, they're gonna make the same amount as, um, for lady being there forever. When do you guys pass that, this past summer? And in, in the case here, they're actually bypassed with rank, so you have, you will have one hundred percent sergeants making more than lieutenants, which, which is.
Okay, cuz when you guys say that, you mean if you pass the percentage, for new people get the percent, but old people?
Yes, that's exactly.
Already currently ranked officers don't get the increase, but a new officer does.
Doing new officers coming up, and we're gonna do nothing with the old ones, or you're, actually, you're gonna have, within the next year, you're gonna have making more with less time, it's gonna happen faster, we think, and it is not, it could happen, it one hundred percent will.
I now understand your concern, okay.
One, I'm the only lieutenant at the agency right now, and we have
Two that just passed.
Two that, one, yeah, and those, three, well, three sergeants, we have one assigned to VCI, three, three sergeants, one assigned to VCI, and two uh, on each squad. Three sergeants, one, we have two squads, we are twenty-four hours a day, four days on, four days off, we have a sergeant assigned to each squad, then we have a sergeant assigned to VCI, which is the Tony Collins Drug and Violent Crime Has Force, so, he's a plainclothes narcotics officer.
And for liability purposes, you have to have a supervisor on the shift.
You have to have a supervisor on the shift, yes. So, um, for compensation stuff, you don't go into executive session for that, it needs to be public knowledge, right?
It can actually be public because this.
Yeah, okay, I, I wanted to know your own his numbers, that's what I didn't wanna, like, waste time and bash numbers. Well, we have, I thought I had with.
There's been a couple adjustments.
And honestly, I'm not even aware of what the numbers are, I just know it's a percentage, but I, if you ask me what percentage, I couldn't tell you, I never know.
Well, the two just got promoted to corporals, so that's gonna change the figures we have, so, I will readjust those.
So, this twenty-nine thousand figure would be an ongoing figure we need to.
Well, that, the twenty-nine thousand reference is, is the back, the, to bring the current ranks, you know.
And that's not for person, that's for, that's for all current corporals, and I don't know how many corporals we have, we have three sergeants, we have lieutenant, we have captain. And I think that would be a cross, and I, how many corporals do we have?
Indefinitely first class.
And DFC, yes.
But they have to work two years, a lower rank, where they can bump up to the next rank.
And DFC is an automatic four-year promotion.
Corporals now.
Corporal is six years, uh, and sergeant, eight year on eligible test after eight years of service, when I say eight, that's the, the minimum. You have to be two years, if you don't test for sergeant, you can be a corporal for fifteen years, and then decide on one test, well, you have to be in a lower rank for a minimum of two years for your eligible to test for the, the rank above, for the next rank.
And that's, and that's my concern as far as how the structure of that department's gonna work, I mean, say if you you only have one lieutenant who has time and service in order to test for captain, for some reason, he has to have hip replacement or something, and then he can't, he would be your only option, and is available for the captain.
So, I know we're gonna, we're gonna approve the budget, but, but you're, how much will that change the budget if we approve it next year, for the next budget cycle?
Well, we, that's why we were waiting for the carryover, um, cuz as we have been working on the budget, which we're gonna discuss, it's very tight this year. I need finding places, so we're hoping that our carryover's gonna be one point four.
That will help.
If it's less than one point four, we're gonna have to cut current departments, so we can hope that it's over one point.
And on a, I guess, a good note, we have a guy graduating from the academy in May, and we had one that were I was starting, starting in May, that'll be a new hire, now, he looks like he's twelve years old. Uh, but, they all look like kids now, he literally looks like he's twelve years old, so. But we have a new guy, we just, we just. But we have a new guy, we just, we just offered him a position, and he'll start about two weeks prior to the academy.
I have two young men that are wanting to apply.
Put the expectations in for always losing and gaining, it seems like.
Well, actually, this new hire is going to fill all the empty slots that we have, so we would have to get approval to add to this year.
And so that means, um, no more overtime.
Well, and, and it should, like, for example, yes, it will significantly cut, today, we have a guy on overtime. Uh, because we, we needed affiliate, we had one guy work.
Now, your new hires, both your new hires have done the academy contract, right, like two years?
Yeah, yeah, we're doing the, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the new guy you're hiring here before long, he, he hasn't been to the academy.
No, and we're just, we're starting them approximately two weeks prior to the academy, cause we're not doing what we did. We've been doing, cause it bit us a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
They're not gonna pay someone for ten months and have to go down there and quit after eight hours.
Right.
So we're just getting two weeks just to get them oriented and then off to the academy they go.
Okay, so with this rank. Structure here, could we maybe get some more stuff and then sit down with you guys and go over this?
Or?
I'm not opposed to, cause I know what they deal with, but I don't want to something to create in a loss to you and search for you, I don't want that.
Honestly, I don't think any of us are in disagreement on that either, and as well as waiting till after the fiscal year starts to put that in place.
Yeah, we're okay with it, we just don't want something rushed, uh, I would rather take your time and do it right. We don't want something rushed and say, okay, we've already got enough money, let's just approve real quick for the new ones, and then, cause that's going to create a. River of problems, it is.
Okay, so we'll keep that on there, attractive. Okay, now we move down to the shotguns and rifles, let me, uh, Joel, I wanna ask you, we're down here to the shotguns and rifles for your department. From my understanding, if you wanna throw a right elbow, it's quite all right, but. One of your deputies said they were wanting to try these shotguns really good, cause they come from Turkey. And make sure they don't, they work, if you want to throw a right elbow, it's okay.
No, I was thinking this morning, I was gonna try to break one, but.
The engineer that developed and built these shotguns, these tactical shotguns, he works for Corporation in Turkey. Which builds certain parts of this weapon, they in turn are, uh, 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 built in Kentucky. To their factory in Kentucky.
Oh, the lyrics in Bill Kentucky.
The engineer will be here Thursday.
Okay, so we could wait in.
We would actually invite, I guess, the commissioners.
I already did that.
What time is it? Ten o'clock, um.
Where we gonna meet at?
Uh, the range.
Okay.
Now again, I mean, this has all been worked out in the main portion of the long portion of the budget for that, so we do have.
You have the money in your budget.
But I discussed this morning, I'm gonna try to make one not work.
Do you wanna wait and see if they work all right, if everybody's happy with it?
So the assault rifles and all of that equipment can't be approved today, we did put it out forbidden.
Let's use the term patrol rifle just to put that on the record.
But I, and actually, I purposely didn't put assault rifle in the bin package. Um, I just put rifle.
Do not assault us, but call them assault.
Right.
But, yes, uh.
But the shotguns are good, but the other stuff is out forbidden.
But I, what I mean, wait to give the okay, make sure everything works good on these.
Well, yeah.
I can, I can tell you with a hundred percent surety, they're gonna work. These, these, uh, these shotguns have actually been out in the system and are run. A lot of those weapons are being used right now in professional matches, three gun matches.
So you think.
They've never, they've never been approached by a law enforcement agency to fill them in their departments.
So let me ask you this, Joel, if I would make a motion saying we approve this with the rifles and shotgun. I, I, let me ask you a question, let me, let me ask you a question.
The shotguns fall under that price range to where.
Yeah, I know, but let me ask you this, so if I would make a motion, even at the next meeting or whenever, well, I was, if we do it today. To make a motion, we can buy these as long as everything, as long as there's no jam ups Thursday.
Okay, that, that's what you wanna do.
Shotguns, you can absolutely approve whatever you.
Right, the other stuff we have to, we have to.
Yeah, rifles and, and, uh, suppressors, it follow along with those, how do you have to wait for the?
Yes.
Yeah, just at the next meeting, it's all published and it'll be, uh, the next meeting, which I do have those bits in, but we still have to go.
So if we make a motion to accept the shotguns as long as they perform.
And, and my concern, but these concerns, and I may be thoroughly impressed Thursday, uh, but they're considerably less money than what we've been buying.
I know, I know.
Considerably less, like from eight hundred to three hundred.
Three hundred.
Less than three hundred.
Yeah, and.
Less than three hundred.
Two hundred and, I believe it's two hundred and either six or two hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, our current eight seventies, we've been paying, well, it's probably eight hundred dollars. Uh.
An AR style platform shotgun that you're looking at, you're, you're not gonna find for less than nine to one hundred dollars.
So I'm going to, and I've already discussed this with the sheriff, so, uh, we got a, a ray of ANO from. Low-powered birdshot to full-powered slugs and buckshot, and I'm going to see if I can get one to jam, and I may, I'll prob, I'm hoping I'm thoroughly impressed.
And that's, and that's, again, this falls in line with this particular ARC, the reason it was designed, the way it was designed was so. You don't have to change any type of piston or anything, and it's, and again, this is an AR style platform, so it's working off of a gas system. The way it's designed, that you cannot, you don't have to worry about having to change anything mechanical in the weapon to go to a, a lower. Uh, feet per second ammunition, if you're going from a. One thousand fifty feet per second, uh, birdshot to a law enforcement. Seven hundred fifty minute, then feet per second, now you're looking at issues of possible jamming. This gun's built and designed to where if you wanted to put low pressure, uh, low grass, low pressure, birdshot, buckshot. Slugs all in the same magazine, it's going to function and operate properly regardless of what you put in it.
So i- it's okay if we wait till next meeting to approve this?
That's true, uh, that makes you feel better, I'm right there with you.
Well, I mean, I don't care, I'll go either way, but I wanna make sure they work.
Absolutely, and that's why we're gonna go out here, we're gonna work these weapons and see what they do, I'm perfectly fine with that. You're not gonna find that, like I said, the reason why I believe we're being offered this type of price. Is because these weapons are out across the nation and even in other countries and being utilized in competition. And nobody has ever approached them about utilizing these weapons in a law enforcement level.
But we would be the first.
We would be the first to use this weapon.
Okay, so we'll put that on here, general for approval, approval denied after the, after the.
Nice meeting.
On Thursday, you're having a Thursday at ten o'clock out during. All right. All right, you got anything else?
I'll say it's next.
Yeah, new business is Sheriff, Cameras, Buddy, Tennis and Taser.
I need a table, which one you wanna go with first, the Tazers? Let's go with the Tazers, cause that's the good one. Um, I believe we had already talked about the Tazers and, and the new contract had actually been included in the new budget. But, uh, it's actually gotten better since then, Lieutenant Leatherman was actually able to work with our representative for Taser. And create a better deal and contract for us, we're getting everything that we had said we'd gotten before. Minus eight thousand dollars, eight thousand three hundred some dollars per year savings, which in total over the five years is gonna save us forty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars. As long as we can sign this contract, getting back to him about thirty-first of this month. Right, that includes everything that we said before, but something we had found out that it also includes is certification for five positions as instructors. And vouchers to recertify those guys in two more years, which saves us twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Now, your old Tazers, some of them, it's pretty well shot, don't you?
They're, they're broke.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Taser does a five-year contract and does full support for five years, and I'm understanding why, it's like everything else today, nothing made to last, and. They're still be five years old this July, and they're, we have a box literally of broken Tazers, now because of the contract, they send us new ones free. But I have a box of no less than a dozen broken Tazers.
Will we sign this contract by the end of the month, and then is it payment right away, or?
No, the anniversary date doesn't start until August, that's when the first payment, the actual first payment will be due August. And for that yearly, that yearly payment is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars, and each payment following after that for the remaining four years is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-two. And again, this contract here saves us over the five years forty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-two cents.
How much is saved?
Forty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-two cents. Providing we get this contract back to them by the end of the year, uh, end of the month.
What's your thoughts, guys?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
But here, imagine, I make a motion, we accept this contract under the Tazer Tazers.
I'll second it.
And I approve that also.
Who signs that, you or?
Uh, you wanna get everybody's signature on it?
I don't know who signs it, I was on, uh, they're out of Arizona, I was on a Zoom call with them Friday, there's any place for one signature, but it just said signature.
Well, according to the Zoom meeting, he told, when he said, as long as he gets a signed contract by me, back by the end of this.
I mean, if you all wanna sign that. Okay, and I'll get it back to them tomorrow.
All right, buddy camp, are you ready for that, or?
Yes, sir, this, well, this past week has brought to light a few things that, uh. The Motorola contract itself is kind of a bit of, a bit of an issue, I guess. There was two particular bills were brought to my attention this past week, which. Basically is null and void, because they've actually been taken care of, the dude that you had spoke about, the fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty and the one thousand nine hundred and nine. Which were from twenty twenty-three, have, I don't know how, I don't know if it was. Done by some type of resolution done within Motorola over the past two years, but those are no longer a concern. However, the one and the last payment for this contract, this five-year contract that was done, was due. One June twenty twenty-four for fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. Now that, I don't feel I should be responsible for that out of my budget, that should have been done.
What was your amount of that?
Fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, and that was due June first of twenty twenty-four. Well, this, it's basically, it's a service contract that was done each year, based upon. The contract when it was done, what, five, five-year contract? But. That payment was due in June of twenty twenty-four.
Why didn't we pay that?
Cause we financed through US Bank, which we still have a final payment to US Bank for twenty-two thousand. So we'll go ahead, because the other thing I guess you were talking about is the reimbursement. It finally got credited to the account, we were waiting for the credit so we could.
Actually, boy, I don't know the type of credit.
No.
That's an incentive.
This, this is, I'm getting through that part too.
So we were waiting for the refund so we could say US Bank the final payment, we just need to go ahead and get final payoff for US Bank to pay it off, that's for the old plan. And that's when all these other invoices came about, cause Motorola wasn't getting them to us.
Was that twenty twenty-three then, that final payment, is that for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, that would be twenty twenty, June of twenty twenty-four, again, I, I, these two that were given to me just this past week. Um, Sergeant Rio had worked on it. Righty, and. It comes to light that these, these two bills are, are no longer current, and how they were resolved or taken care of, I, it wasn't able to be told. But.
Unless the payment we sent him for that was applied to labels.
Don't know. Yeah, the fifteen thousand.
Check to the oldest invoice.
But I even. I requested anything that would come out of the materials and supplies budget from twenty-one through, and none of it reflected any payments of this amount.
But we do owe it, I mean, it's a.
Total thirty-seven thousand.
We still have the twenty-two to pay off for the old, and that should clear us up for the old cameras, right?
That would be the S, because that would have taken the current, to the last final, the last payment to finalize the current contract that are up right now.
So.
Well, currently still, they're being replaced.
Okay.
That falls into line to this, I received a new invoice from Motorola for fifty thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. But that was the initial payment for the new contract. Starting March of this year, carrying us through till March of next year, but the up-to-date invoice reflected two incentives that were given to us. Which was for one for twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and one for fifty-five thousand, seven hundred forty dollars, which makes our first payment for this year's. Uh, contract, five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Which is a huge savings.
How, how much, five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars?
Yes, rather than. Rather than sixty-seven thousand, it's not many. You like that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll bring as many of those to you as I can. But.
Just, just, uh, so we need to make a motion to pay off the twenty-two thousand.
We need to vote, go ahead and do the payoff for US Bank.
But I think we need to confirm that that is also included, or is this, is this in addition to that twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, we will have to do probably a budget revision for those two.
Then we need to do, so what about the fifteen, eight, forty, what, what, where does that fall?
That's what he's referring to.
Do we have to pay that off also, right?
Well, yeah.
Plus the twenty-two thousand.
That's for US Bank for the financing.
So the fifteen, eight, forty, is that the service contract for Motorola and the twenty-two thousand is your financed equipment? Is that correct?
What was the twenty-two thousand?
I have no idea.
Do you know?
That's the final for the.
Just straight twenty-two thousand?
Oh, no, 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 and it has interest since then. We got to pay off for it back in November, we were waiting for that refinance.
It never. Didn't come through.
But now they just wanna credit that. I've been dealing with this Motorola since, how far back was it, eighteen? Two thousand eighteen, I got emails from back to eighteen for this credit.
But this fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty, this is under the current contract that ends at the end of this month. Um, actually, no, May, right, it ends in May, the current contract, um.
That was one that was due last year.
This was due June of last year. Now, the, the new contract, uh, the payment for it is due. It's only for five thousand, two hundred and eighty, and that's for our new contract, now we've already received all the equipment and everything for that new contract. And that's, again, with the. Sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of incentives that we're saving.
So we already have a motion on this new contract, do you need another motion to pay that?
We did approve the Tazers already.
That was done in October.
Was it?
Yeah, for Tazers and the Cameras and. We already did that.
But, okay, you wanna make a motion to pay off US Bank, get the payoff on it?
Plus, we already have, where's the money to pay that one?
Do, sign the contract.
I know, but with that already being a previous, whoever signed the contract, you guys approved that in previous meetings, somebody had to prove the contract.
They're back there.
That would have been five years ago.
Gotta be paid off, so.
Actually, it was two thousand sixteen.
So we don't need to make another motion, it's just.
Just do the payoff.
Well, I'm moving you to pay off, we got, we don't have a choice.
Now. The Taser, uh, the new contract for the Tazers, that was included in the new fiscal year, so we've already, and actually. Right, that doesn't take effect to August, but it's actually, it's actually cheaper than what we had.
I just wonder why we have to have a second motion for, it's already under contract.
It's gotta balance to do, but we wanna pay it off, we don't wanna continue doing payments.
Yeah, okay.
We wanna pay off.
All right, I second.
I agree.
So Joel, was your concern the fact that this is gonna come out of the equipment budget?
I don't feel like that fifteen, eight, forty should need to come down to my budget.
Well, it has to come out, Lana, they just have to do a budget revision to add it in, I am gonna have to do a budget revision for the next meeting.
For, uh, this year.
Yeah, I don't feel like this should come out of my current budget, so unless there's a revision where that's added to the budget.
Yeah, that's what she's saying, do revision, add it to your budget.
That's where it has to come out of, but just to put the money back in.
Use those bad body cans.
Sir.
All your deputies using?
Even I do.
My, my point is, maybe we'll get a little bit of money from them, help pay for that.
Well, I, I. Well, I, I, I put a donation bucket out in the lobby.
Only the quarter's smiling, I don't know what he thinks. I have to pick one of them. Okay, your cameras.
I think that's it.
So then we need to do a motion for the new contract for five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
That's your new cameras, the five thousand two hundred and eighty.
That's, yes, this, uh, all the equipment is there.
Already been done.
Yeah.
That's already been proved, so I don't think we need no approval to pay that.
Really, you're being concerned with cameras. The only thing with that is the new.
Okay.
The new budget has the money in it for this contract.
Okay.
So the five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars was actually included in the new budget that I don't have yet.
Okay.
But that.
So you need.
That needs to be made April.
So you need to, you need to get that to come out of your current budget?
I need, well, I need that to come out of my not-yet-perceived budget.
Yeah, well.
The new fiscal year.
We gotta, you gotta take it out of this year.
If it's coming out.
So I can add that in the budget revision too?
Yeah.
Okay, and then that can be taken out once the new budget's. Okay.
So is that a motion? Go ahead and have that.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and pay that out of his current budget.
I second that group, so.
And we'll do a budget revision to add that back in, so.
This, now what about the fifteen thousand eight forty? Just make sure I understand that. That one's already been approved. But, cause that's, that was June of twenty four.
Been in the budget, but we don't know if it was in the budget or not, truthfully.
So we might have to do a revision for that.
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Shoot, yeah, so.
I second, whatever.
Sending nobody motion?
Put it in the first motion.
We'll go ahead and do a second motion there.
Yeah, we'll do.
Uh, I make a motion, we include the fifteen eight forty in the. Uh, for a budget revision.
I'll second. I don't like it, but we have to.
We don't like it either, we don't have a choice.
I agree with you, I, I, but I just didn't feel like that should have been.
Well, there's two other things to bring up with his budget for the next budget revision. That I need approval before I add. Okay, so the access control, but I did double check and it had not been added back in. So with the, the stuff with the new law enforcement building, the access control cost. And the cameras for the new building. Okay, were taken out of his law enforcement professional services. Um, that's forty one thousand dollars that was not in the budget for that year. For this current year. So that's, it ate up everything as professional services because he did not have forty one thousand dollars in there for access controls and cameras. But some of that, was any of that covered by grant or any other funding?
Law enforcement center cannot be covered by grant. The courthouse annex was covered by grant. His building cannot be, well, not by the grant used.
That was forty one thousand dollars for access controls and cameras. I, it's over in the professional services, but it wasn't budgeted, it wasn't expected to cost at the time.
So who, well, how was it approved before?
Well, it needed done. I mean, they needed to be able to have access and then a camera.
We did a bid opening, yeah. Um, like there was, like you guys formed, not you, but they, it was formally approved. In a meeting, but frequently we do not have the discussion on what line it's gonna come from. We just approve the expenditure.
And we could have taken it, that we could even journal entry it over to other buildings, which is just gonna make that account a little low as well. But when you do an expenditure, you wanna kinda keep it with its apartments at its width.
Right.
So if we, I can either journal entry it over to other buildings, cause it was a cost with the improvement project. Or a budget revision back in the law enforcement. But I need to know either way so I can include it.
Yeah, that's just in the law enforcement building, right?
Yes.
But that's the only thing that's in that building.
Because the courthouse annex was covered by grant funds, but I couldn't get grant funds to cover their building. Cause it was sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty four dollars for security cameras. And twenty two thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars for your access control question.
So you're telling me we should have changed, temporarily changed the name of the building?
No, they would not have, uh.
Allowed that, trust me. I tried to buy panic buttons for other offices and they immediately came back.
Cause it's a court security grant. It's only for court facilities, yeah.
Do have some good news about the bills that are on, on in Charleston at the moment. I know you guys were kinda worried about that increase for the sheriff or one thousand for every year of service that they have to law enforcement. That's probably on the pass.
I see they got sold.
No, I'm a real, I'm a real concerned about the one about the homestead. That there, that could kill us.
Homestead.
Oh, yes, they had another, that's, that's one if you keep up on it. I don't wanna get into it, but it's not, it's, uh, I, sometimes I think Charleston would like to start taking.
You know, Dave was here today, though, that five hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that's for the whole.
Yeah, for that adjacent, that is county, no, no, I was talking to Jason, because they weren't here. That is for overall county tax collection.
Yeah.
So that's not commission revenue. That's all your excess levies, all your school board. So that's a much larger impact on the school boards, like it'll, it'll still have an impact on us, but it's much larger on the school board and stuff. I need to say that, sorry, they weren't here, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so budget revision or journal entry?
Make a motion, we do budget revision, and I'll say.
Well, I'll just include it, so I.
In, in the budget. If you, it's six of one, half of those and the others, what are amounts to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, you said.
Oh, I, I.
Okay.
I don't think you got all your stuff in before I do that.
Oh, I know, I didn't send you Joe, I kept calling you.
All right, is that all you have?
I think so, sir.
Thank God.
He getting all expensive.
Probably been in three months.
I'm, I'm gonna try to come out there, see, I'd like to see the shotguns and actions.
Information. We got a twenty round drum just for you to use.
No, I don't wanna shoot him, I don't wanna see you get shot.
I know somebody upsetting up there would be more than happy to run that twenty round.
Can I have somebody cut on my box since I won't be here?
What's that?
Can I have somebody coming for me since I can't be there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we, next item is to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six levy estimate.
So what you have is actually the state document that I'm gonna be submitting, and I want you to approve it. Does need to be approved tonight, so we, you know, we've made those adjustments, um. I have no, uh, just a good point, but, um, entered in everything, I have double-checked everything, triple-checked everything. Um, with those adjustments that we made at the last meeting, increasing the, um. Unisun balance from one point two to one point four. We made a couple adjustments under three oh six, three forty five, three eighty two, and three eighty. Um, that makes our proposed budget exactly one point three million. Uh, I did take charges for other services. I did change that from ten to eight, cause that two dollars at the end was just driving me crazy. That's what, it was exactly eight point three, I think, two dollars at the end. Um, and then with coal. Um, without the, you know, unsure whether the unassigned, unbalanced, all the expenditures, I've double-checked. Uh, salary increases, insurance rates, and everything in there, so it does balance recap sheet. Um, I've gone through any errors, but that has, uh, burned up. Um, the rainy day, uh, getting the reports for that. Uh, I said coal was actually fifty percent less than year, that was the carryover balance. And of course, anytime there's an explanation, there's an explanation sheet. Um, three eighty, I had to break down what we were claiming that four hundred and five thousand dollars was, and. The, um, six eighty nine transfer from funds, that was the loan payment. And then with coal, I just put that we expect that in the expenditures spent before the end of the year. And then with a final comment, as we're in the final stages of the improvement projects. Uh, we're trying to be as accurate with the estimate carryover, but realistic as well. Uh, there's still additional couple items that need to be addressed in the final stage. We hope and we leave this estimated carryover that we have listed. So we do need a motion to go ahead and accept. This levy and submit it to the state auditor, which I will do when I get back to the other time.
Yeah. Right here, I'm gonna check your budget.
I'm just looking through.
Suter?
Yeah.
Yep, right there.
All right, how long does it take for the, then to get back to it to say a, a proof?
It'll be a couple, as you've done the training, and some counties will submit their budgets at the start of the month. But the majority, the deadline is the twenty eighth to submit, and most of the counties. About eighty percent of the counties are gonna all submit their budgets this week. So when they're approving all of those in one week, it's gonna be, and plus, um. If there's any conditions to the approval, if we have to give any explanation of anything, so it could be next week, it could be the month. And, but with this, once this is approved, I will submit the publication also to the newspaper. Because it has to run in time for us to live the levy on the fifteenth of April.
Well, it's short and run a little tight, is.
Oh, it's very tight.
Yeah.
It's very tight. We're estimating one point four, if it does not come in at one point four, it's really gonna be hurt.
So my, my word of advice is, tighten up, right?
What I've been saying, Paul.
I know.
If every sheriff guy at one.
Do I hear a motion to. Approve the budget?
We don't read very much.
I'm sure it's looking.
I'll make a motion.
We'll need a motion.
I was waiting for him to tell us, but I didn't wanna make a motion about, I second.
Okay. Prove that all.
Okay, um, tonight I will be going back and submitting the documents, and I'll also be sending to the newspaper requirements to get the publication out.
Right, uh.
We, we got time to do it. Do you wanna get this?
Whatever he has to present a vision of, sure.
How long will it take you to do a big chat?
Uh, you guys already had presentation, it's, uh.
Yeah, but if you got anything to add, it's worth it.
No, I have nothing more to add. I mean, I assume Warren got a chance to talk to him. Did you get a chance to talk to him about it?
Not really, Kim and I kinda talked about it a little bit, but what was the deadline on that?
It'll just have to be before open enrollment, so if you change. I think it's.
May, right?
May, yeah, May. We weren't sure, it's either April or May.
We, we're gonna try and discuss it with some of the, uh, employees and.
Yeah, we heard it off the first meeting on Tuesday.
It'll be the April eighth meeting.
Yeah, cause the only information I have is the information the corner started presenting to you all, so. Yeah.
Additional information?
The orthodontia was the only additional information. Um, and they did say that if someone is currently in the midst of orthodontia. Whatever benefits haven't been paid out from the previous company, they would cover up to fifty. Now, if the person was on previously insured, they won't pay. But if they switch from association or counties. Um, to us and have like a seven hundred dollar. In benefits that would still need to be paid out, they, they pay that out.
They've already started the.
They've already started, yes, but if the person was uninsured prior to open enrollment, they won't pay for the remaining orthodontal work. No, I think that was on clarification, we were waiting for them to do the.
Should have had team, probably did this. I'll change your table's in there. I've stuck that paper up.
I'll get stuck in the coffee.
All right, we got this proclamation here for this community, um, action, helping people and changing lives. I don't know, it's American Poverty Fighting Network, it says, whereas community action has made essential contributions to individuals. And families across the nation by creating economic opportunity, strengthening communities. Whereas community action is a robust state, local force, connecting people to life-changing services. And creating pathways for prosperity and many, that's America. The American county, country, and. Uh, whereas community action builds and promotes economic. Uh, stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities, stable homes. Whereas community action promotes community-wide solutions to changing throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. Whereas community action delivers innovative services in. And, uh. Support that creates greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas community action insists on community participation involvement, ensuring, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a. Voice and will be heard. And whereas community action is celebrating sixty one years. Uh, and providing. Proven results for American. So, what's your thoughts on this? I wasn't gonna read that last.
Make a motion to improve this proclamation.
And?
Given authorized president's son.
Yeah. I second, I approve that also. You'll have, we'll get that dropped, chill. Okay, since we're down, it's just a couple minutes to go, we'll move on with our. Six o'clock point, I've turned into one of them.
Yeah, for the Ruby Lewis Suter Estate, um, I will need the names of all parties represented.
Did you get that?
Not gonna speak, okay. Amber, sorry, I think that's Amber.
Yeah, who, both of you speaking? She's not, just you?
Yeah.
And I didn't catch your name?
Rinda.
Rinda, will you please stand, raise your right hand? We wanna swear your hand. Do you promise to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God? All right, uh, when do you start?
Um, well, what you have the copy of?
Yeah.
Um.
I didn't get a chance to read it, but yeah, see.
So, so, well, let me give a summary here. Okay, so, uh, both Robert and Rinda came in at the very day mark. To open their mother's estate. Um, we talked for a bit and then with that. Uh, pretty much, they didn't realize they agreed, but they pretty much agreed with the distribution of the asset. So they both qualified as co-administrators of the estate. Um, that was, oh my gosh, sorry, here. Application date was March of twenty twenty four. So since then, um, Rinda had presented the letter there. Uh, requesting that Robert be removed, and that is the reason for today's hearing. Um, and all parties were sent notice of the hearing, so then.
My first question, this letter is dated August twenty second.
Yes, we've gone back and forth with that one, um, but they said they were, things were gonna work out, but nothing, so we moved forward.
That was my other question.
And that's the reason for today's hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember my boy, he's my sister sewed up. A long story, it appears my mother died without will, but kind of she really didn't, she'd already divided the stuff up, it just didn't get transferred in time. I thought there was no debt, and we, we, we said there's no debt, we already know where it drifts where everything goes, so it was all good. Later, it's on this debt. And I told my sister, quote unquote, since I got the most valuable piece of property, I will take care of the debt. I'll eat it all. You know, cause we're both on disability, me and my sister, it's just down with me and her. See, that was all good. See, that was all good, but the contents of the upstairs was given to her, her and her daughter. And there was times that, you know, she would expect to show up unannounced where I stay, you know, Robert's at. And I let her daughter come in, walk inside and say, whatever they want, cause it was the gate to them. And, you know, I kind of like lived in the basement. I'm sure some gentleman here, the test is high than that, but anyhow, they kind of broke into my stuff and took some of my personal belongings and stuff. And so I told her from now on, you let me know when you're coming. I changed the law, but watching when we never had a key for fourteen years, my mother didn't, I lived there. But long story short, I'm not worried about it. I need about four more months until I have that debt paid off, like I said. As soon as my sister signs the paper and, you know, she agrees, that was gave me in this, but I need to walk. And I'll pay that debt. I done escaped from Jesse to the heads down to nine thousand, so that ain't a lot, but I got some money. I just wouldn't turn it over to nobody and I don't have no problem setting down that her tenant room thing. Nothing I may have a lot of.
I'm not aware of what he said. I came to petition the court cuz stuff in mind was being coming missing this date. I was cut from the state. I was never given a key. I never denied him access into six thirty-seven Turnham Drive, which is another part of the state, which is where I moved to when the electricity got turned out. We've all resonated in two oh eight. And then I was paying all the bills to two oh eight and six thirty-seven Turnham Drive. With the exception of six hundred thirty-seven dollars, we split on a internet bill. And then they came in one time to turn off the electric and I paid five hundred eighty-five to keep it on with my credit card. And then the water and sewage I kept up and food, cuz I didn't want to accumulate debts in my own. All I want is my mother and dad did not live in debt and I don't want to see him dying dead. That's all I'm asking you to do. Is to get this stuff clear and evidently me and him can't because it's been a year or something and the taxes haven't been filed. The our uh the IRS taxes haven't been filed, the tax hasn't been paid, the water and sewage is I quit paying it once I moved out. I kept caught it off. They shut it off twice down there. It's in my daddy's name. I've asked him to remove it. I've asked the electric company to clear my daddy's name. And I just want my mom and dad out of debt. Okay, that's all I want. And we did know about the debt because me and him is the one who ran up the credit card. My mother never used that credit card in her life.
Now, the nine thousand dollars that you're talking about paying, well, that put everything out of debt.
Oh, yes. And as far as the legacy, when my mother passed, I don't know if anybody, you wanna call anybody out here, but I'm sure some gentleman in the bank wanted to say that uh, they probably knew firsthand that my sister did not reside in there. She's residing in ten forty B with the address now about Walmart trailer. That on rental lot, my parents for, I know every twenty years. I stayed there with my father when he was dying. Then when my mom died, she was sick, but last week my dad was like somewhere like the end of June. Anyhow, my sister came down to help me with my father. She never left after that. Well, my mom died, but I'm already with that one taking W R inside. I just said, you can take it for everything. I told her I'd take Paul with that, but I haven't had. They already know and I I got proof that we ain't here to prove all that right now. We're here to address what she wants. I'll give her what she wants. I just said I need to walk. I'll pay that one for a set nine thousand dollars in pool, all by myself. And we'll go down there and transfer deeds, which I think that the lady, I keep thinking it wasn't you, it's the other girl. Uh, said, you know, go ahead, Renee, if you and him agree, and your sister don't care, you go ahead and put your mom's car in your name and you gave it to you, the truck in your name, Rob gave you.
You guys were agreeing.
Cuz we started out a little much. Because I don't know.
But you will have to go to an attorney to get through deeds.
Yes, but okay, but then the debt came out. We said there was no debt. I'm I didn't think there was. I'm not saying she knew the whole time, but I was, I told her, since I got the most valuable property, I will pay. But as far as this block out stuff, I got pictures. I don't wanna bring up and waste your time. She's got one room, ten by ten, conscious my mom's upstairs. Okay, her daughter's coming. It's really her daughter's stuff. I think there's no respect or tag with her business. But anyhow, I'll tell you a fair debate and drop it off. But you know, I lived there. She lived up there a whole this time, not until other than when my mom got sick. So all I'm saying is I didn't prove all that, but we're not here. I just told her I'd step down. I said, for all you people, give me the whole office third check. And I'll have that rest. I denied that one something dollars still left on that debt. Paid, I took it home cuz I said I would. There ain't nothing else. We ain't sell nothing to my mom. That wasn't my mom's a tip. Most of y'all get done before, but my mom didn't issue that either. Okay, that's enough. You know what I'm saying? So I want you once. I just think I agree that everything you said. I figure I can sit here in front of all you people, I'll bet back all this. If I can make it, I won't be there. Ain't nothing wrong.
I know.
And you will.
I um I'm partying, I will be in, I can't already stand, but Robbie, I had cop cops three times for you not letting me in that house up there. Nine month running records, number one. Number two, in the state of West Virginia, you cannot sell anything listed to the state you sold the shed. You do not put none of the money towards the debt. I'm sorry, brothers. I'm not trying to hurt you. I told you from the get-go, I'm not trying to take your house. I just wanted to do what was right by mom and dad. They clear, you had this credit card from September. That credit card went from eight hundred dollars, you had from uh July first, where I got my portable dentures. I had it September for one month. You took it back, kept running it up. Mom had me canceling. A second card was issued. Mom and dad didn't live in debt and I'm not gonna die again.
You must not hear me, God, say, I don't say I take the whole debt. I don't say I would. And back to this here, I've denied her access to the house. You gotta remember, there's uh uh the common that's actually belonged to upstairs. And then my mom's phone is herself. I took up whatever she wanted, whatever she wants something, but I can't take one day at a time cuz it's how long one room. I got pictures. Then she wants one day, she went and take it all. I'm curious. Mom, I promised my mother that I wouldn't throw this stuff out in the backyard thirty seconds after she passed away, cuz I've said that once and you told my mother.
Are there things in the house?
But you know what I'm saying?
Are there things in that house that you want?
My personal belongings, whenever I left, when the power was out, we're still in there. I asked him not to bother him. Cuz my, when I went back to my trailer, my daughter in there had destroyed my back porch and it's not, I asked him to help me. And she had took me up three times to get the stone refrigerator out of there. Was we given this refrigerator? And I have other people that took me up. I didn't, they were never over home. They wouldn't leave the door unlocked. By law, he's supposed to gave me a key, which I did not have. Two twelve is his address. The cops had told him. I don't know if you need either officers, one of them that was there. I know door wasn't. Roger, I can't remember. Was twice when my mother was living, he was told he's to stay in the downstairs while I was taking my mom upstairs. It was two different places. The upstairs was for me to be in. This was settled. I left because power gone. And I can come shut it down. Water and sewage tagged it twice. They turned it back on and the water company told me they was gonna do something about it. I said, that's all on him now. I'm not in that here. You ain't bringing me into this. And I'm not wanting my brother trouble. I'm upset that he sold the shed and didn't put money towards the debt. Every time they sell something, they're not paying towards the debt.
I just said I'd pay the money, but by the shit she's talking about, if you notice, it wasn't on the paperwork and we sold out that day. They already mentioned it for the burial, water, and money that I found out later, but I'm not getting it off. The shed was giving me my father. It's a, you know, shed. My dad paid twenty-five hundred dollars worth for it. So I'll tell you what the problem was. The house needs root. I got it. I haven't done it. Thirty-two hundred dollars for the shingles. I sold the shed, get out of the road, and I got the money for the shingles, but open the house, but you know. I'm hanging my settlement. I got a pizza. You just heard me once again. You got a room full of stuff she told me any time. If you can't go lock on my door and say, hey, if you're gonna be there, let me just leave it open. Because the last time I didn't trust it, her daughter, her daughter come in here, her settlement day, she broke in and out downstairs for my belongings for her. But now since then, I moved my belongings.
And press charges.
Moved all her. I would, that's my niece. But anyhow, I wouldn't. He's the only one saying I'm cooperating all. He got a room full of something. He can't get any time. You don't lock on the door, say, I'm coming there. You know, that's it. And the time she asked me to sign this paper, remember what you write, cops told me, after I loaded it up on her ex-husband's truck. Day later, he said, I don't know where, but I said, what are you talking about? Just her ex-husband, that's my dear and my first friend. I had it sitting there for a week at the doorway, wanted to come get it. Then they told the guy I was with him. He said, what do you mean, Rob? He did everything but kiss us. After he go, it was off my door two times. He opened the door. He had a hand shot and a thing right there door. Move back. Why's he calling? I don't remember. All I said, there's no scene.
Technically, we both need to be uh rather uh made down. We shouldn't have been torn in because the day we were being torn in, the plea had come up, we got an argument. Technically, we should have been torn, to be honest. And you don't have to just move down, we'll move both up as time like that and you all decide whoever. Just settle my mom's debt, leave.
Their sister, my sister gave us money to settle it. Ron, she displayed, she didn't uh. Once.
Warren, did you just hear Renda that she would be okay with being on the sign as well on the desk this time? For her party, is that an option?
Well, this is kind of wrong there. They talk money. See, we got the money, but I'm paying the debt that my mother earned. So we transferred us when this lady should remember that we we kind of, like, said, go ahead, go, put a partner name.
Yeah, they didn't think they were grand at the time.
She did not notice that. Now, I couldn't send you an argument like she was, that they don't argue. Nah, her daughter, I gotta report it. I held my phone, but we're gonna play it right now.
Well, they weren't.
I just said.
Everything.
I just said she can be the executive.
If he wouldn't have, if he wouldn't have sold something that we could, I asked to sell the saddle begin with, the shed. And he wants to talk about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, him compared to my thirty thousand dollars trailer that needs a new bathroom in the back. Um, you wanna talk about some players? Then what about the other piece of my house?
This new, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. I tell you what, what what would you like to see done?
I would like to proposition that we both keep our homes and we sell the uh vacant lots, the two lots and the um cemetery to cover all deaths, including the back taxes. He will still have a home, I will have a home, and let's call it a day.
The cemetery, I didn't.
My mom hangs two, another lot beside my mom and dad's house.
Okay.
We can sell that, we can sell the ramp. And there's another sub lot that we didn't even know about that's somewhere about Curville Dell. And we own, we have two cemetery. So the shed's gone. We could have started out with the shed and the ramp and probably would have covered it, but now the shed's gone. So now I wanna have to go after the lot, vacant lot where his home used to be that my mom and dad gave him, but it burnt down. So there's a vacant lot there. And he has a home. He's getting a home. He's getting a better deal than me, sale a bigger land than me. And we sold the lot and um the other plot, the cemetery uh things. He's still getting what he wants. He wants the big house, two oh eight. That's what he wants. He's getting it. Okay, no argument. And my mom and dad get out of debt. That's all I'm asking.
I got a better one. Why don't we just sell mom's car and send that dog?
Then Robbie, you know what? Sell the car. I don't care. And just please, sir, just sell it all, please. Please sell it all. And we divide.
This belonged to me. I built it two hundred. Burn it down.
Which name?
Never put my name.
Oh, it's not your name.
It never was, but my inheritance perhaps.
I did it six thirty-seven for nineteen years. I, they got, okay, this is the, okay, I'm gonna tell you the beginning. Robbie was given two fifths, two eighteen, that he did, had house, it burnt down. My sister was given property and it's covered and still standing. I was given my trailer too. But I never, I paid a hundred and fifty dollars. They got named everything for it. We get that instead. I definitely tell you for my property, ten pounds for it. But my mom.
Yeah, that's what it worked. I remember she said, go get it for you. I just had my mom's like a new day.
It's like that vacation paper about my mother. I don't want to see it.
Hold on a minute.
And um. So my mom was so, and I admit this, my mother died in hell. Me and him was fighting, constantly fighting, everybody. They, he was razzing about getting this, putting his name. And that stuff kept coming up, missing upstairs, and I'd get angry at mom cuz I'd go out to get something and it'd be gone. And I put my mom through five months of her dying day for nothing but hell. Okay, I'll admit it. I'm sorry, Lord God, I am sorry. Now, like I said, all I want you to do is clear my mother and dad's name. I don't care if I walk away with five dollars. And that's a truth. The God spoke truth. I don't care.
So you just want everything paid off?
Pardon me, sir?
You want everything paid off, so they're completely, their names are all dead.
I want the electric out of my father's name. I want the water and sewage out of my father's name. I want the bills caught up. I want the debt from Ruby Suter paid off. I want the IRS that wasn't filed last year because he want me to tax order taken care of because we're gonna have to pay gift tax on my sister's property, cuz my sister did have the smartest to go and get hers transferred before my mother passed away. And whatever else is gonna be out there in my mother's name. I took care of PVC already and two other things out of my own pocket recently.
So the only debt, Mr. Chucky?
Whatever.
So the only debt is the chassis? The only debt is the chassis?
Eleven thousand eighteen cents.
I'm part of that, so.
The only debt that you have is the chassis, eleven thousand.
That's the only one who put a claim against us, but I'm still paying off anything my mom owed us the way they would have wanted in there.
Right, but when you are referring to paying off debt by selling these things, you're just referring to eleven thousand dollars for chassis.
The only debt we're entitled to pay off is chassis. Of course, the electric, the electric.
Right, right.
Water and so down.
Okay.
And we got to pay the back taxes, plus IRS wasn't never filed, her pro- her.
Her income tax.
Two thousand twenty-three taxes, which my sister got gifted a house, so there's gonna be now that the time lapse, we're looking at IRS penalties. Because we never got taxes out. We failed to do our job there. So like I say, by all means, if you have to remove me too, do it. Whatever you all agree on.
Do you ask them to remove your, about pointing somebody else? Other than the vehicle, which has the vehicle already been transferred?
No.
I don't want my brother to lose nothing. I know. I think the only way to settle this, I'd be fine.
All of the real estate, if somebody else is appointed as administrator, then an administrator doesn't have authority to sell the real estate. So with the homes and the lots, it would still take these two to agree and sign an E D.
And there's two vehicles in here.
Okay, two vehicles. I knew the one they, I didn't, cuz they knew their mom's wishes and they actually.
We wanna buy that.
Since then, Renda's run through her money. Their son tore up the car and now she's, you just heard, she was reading, okay, by seven, that's always mine, so that's good. But anyhow, you know.
So the vehicle still in your mom's name?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's in my mother's name.
My sister's file my mom's tax.
Are you driving it now?
No, her son was. They tore.
He's driving the truck. I'm not driving the car. In my dad's name. But I'm not driving. My mom's car is broken down right now, sir.
Well, caution, I don't know that it's legal to drive around a vehicle transferred in a, in a, in a seat.
Well, we can't get it transferred out.
No, she go and put it in her name at any time. The lady took that and you know, you can't drive it. He wants to sell all the naked body. I think we put out a thousand. I'll give her another twenty-five hundred. Because that's all that.
Buy her out.
But yeah.
You need to buy her out.
Just for that lot.
Buy me out.
How about we sell that lot in there too? That was always mine. Seven five thousand? I'll give her another twenty-five hundred.
Robbie, why don't you just get one of your buddies to, why don't you get one of your buddies, you could tell me has all this money and get them to take it and pay off the debts? And you give them the title to the lot next door. And when you pay them off, you own it. I'll transfer mom's house to you right now and you transfer mine. But I will not do the lot or anything else because that's the only thing we have for leeway without us being homeless to pay off the debt. Now, if your buddy wants to pay off the debt, then you you sign a agreement, your buddy, I'll all for that, but you will one hundred percent for that.
Hey, really, ask my set whom they want, but you can't be.
Now, you wanted me to go fly by night. I would have done this for the law.
Yeah, you said, but let me ask you a question. If you take all liability, paying everything off.
That includes any IRS penalties.
Listen to, just listen to her.
Because he did not show up for any of my appointments. I tried to make them, they needed to vote executive reserve. So now there's gonna be penalties. So he can take that and the back taxes because I was here October first, pay my share. I told him to meet me down there. He didn't. So I will pay my, mine on the trailer. But I will not pay a dime towards what he's gonna inherit.
Now, you heard what she said. Do you agree to those terms?
Yeah, I see. I told her to begin with. I can't, just I can't make this happen cuz I'm not you guys. But I told her, if that's trying to get Jesse, let her take her trailer and get it put in her name now, but she kept saying she worried about. I'll take the debt of the whole debt and credit for, we leave on you, for you love, okay? Because I did get the more valuable property and by damn without it, my mother, it wouldn't have went that way and she, you know, her daughter would have gained more than me, but that ain't what my mom did, you know what I'm saying? So yes, I agreed to take the whole debt.
I'm walking away on.
I didn't know about the taxes. My sister's been doing my mom's taxes for years. And she said she, my mom always got back eight hundred dollars. So I don't know what were that when it turned, but yes, once again, I'll take it again.
You'll take, you'll take, you agreed to take the taxes?
Yeah, I just wanted what gave the name, which was the whole place I would say.
I'll play my property caption, Robbie, myself, thank you, then.
That's what gave the name. That's the property I was studying.
Now, can we, you think we could get a deputy to go with her through the day, let her get all of her belongings out?
I need time to get my room in the back.
What's that?
I said, I don't think she has anywhere to give them.
No, I'm I'm asking.
She says she doesn't have.
Rogers, like family, me. And he don't.
Huh?
Can be done with a court order.
I'm just telling you, you have.
She's saying she doesn't have anywhere to put it.
Oh, you don't have no place to put it?
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. I, there's a room of mine that can't be used right now. And I've asked, he was supposed to come up and help me and mom's got that, it's a, I'm, I'm, he's getting a five bedroom, four or five, six bedroom house. He can leave my stuff stored there till I get my place in order. It's not gonna be like any problem for them, there's only two of them. I'm not asking, no. Except stop taking my stuff.
So, so the agreement here is, the agreement here is, she can keep her stuff up, up in that room. Or where it's at in your upstairs. You're gonna pay off everything for what you receiving.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And take care of the taxes.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Now, who's gonna fa, now wait a minute, who's gonna file the income tax?
They have to do it together, they're co-administrators.
Your co-administrators, so both of you are just gonna have to work together on that. Now, I know this is gonna be hard for you and I'm gonna tell you both. Just like I've told dozens of people that come before us in the last ten years, it's a shame. That you've let a little bit of money come between you both. Cause one of these days. And it's a shame. And I would really encourage both of you to sit down and work together with this. Because it could get bad. You don't want that. You, you know, I hope you don't want that.
No, my brother, he knows that.
Did she leave the stuff in the upstairs room?
I just don't like it, we don't wanna do it behind my back without asking.
Can we leave both of yous on this or one of yous wanna go off?
I mean, I don't care, I've stayed with you both, you know, I just said you're.
Are you good working with him?
No more selling of anything, Robbie.
I did sell a shed, but see, the shed was actually gave me, that was shed. But anyhow, I'm like, you know, I need to make, give money to them.
But I don't forget a roof. Why didn't you give me half the money when you sold the shed so I could've paid half of my roof? That's what I'm saying, all you think about. And what, proving your house.
It was my shed, you know that. What did you say? Mom, I like that shed. She said, no, it's wrong.
Stop saying stuff yours, it was mom and dad's.
Don't even, I think I gave more than I needed to.
Okay, you, can you agree on one an attorney? Because you guys do have to go to an attorney to get the actual property straight.
Charles Smith, Robbie, I thought I said to begin with. Mr. Smith, whoever, you told me the names, whether it was Smith, Miles and Michael says I wanna.
I need to list their several, did you call them? But yeah, you guys have to agree on an attorney. And you need to go together to get all this straightened out, because a new deed, you're gonna have to be.
You know, and it can't be done till that debt's paid for chassis and I can't pay it.
It's not a mortgage, it's a credit card.
I know, but the judgment keeps transferring the property, right?
Go to the attorney and they will get, they will get all that cleaned up.
I mean, I've been talking with chassis, right, you know, I tried to say, Rob, I don't know how it works, you know, I said, hey, look. The house is worth a lot more, you got no security right now, as far as I know, that one, you may never be able to play.
So get, you'll get an attorney and, and the attorney will, will work it out.
Because if you get the new deed in your name, you could actually use that as collateral, get a loan in your name to pay it off.
I tried that and um.
But you need to talk to an attorney, they can work all. Yeah, so you need to agree on an attorney and you both need to show up together.
You told us, you don't write or, yeah, like, one of these says, you don't want, don't let, don't wait, do it now.
But we couldn't legally do it, Robbie, because. If we knew there was a debt, I wouldn't have done that, I knew there was a debt. They were never.
See, I think you do that part of the attorney, you, you need to go to an attorney, you need to agree and go to an attorney. Okay, and then they can straighten out the whole property situation and everything else. And you can solve this.
Are you both agreeable to this? Are you agreeable to this? He pays off everything, takes care of the taxes and everything, and you get a lawyer together to get things straightened up? And he's gonna keep your uh furnishing, your belongings is upstairs until you have room to put, correct?
Nothing's been given away or stolen in my property.
So I, I wanna tell you both something. Listen to me very, very, very carefully. This conversation has been recorded. So you can't come back and say something different. Do you agree? And you agree?
I don't agree, this is, uh, nothing, my, with my hearing is what I'm agreeing.
Okay, okay.
He's gonna pay off chassis because they said that we can't transfer not until they relinquish the debt and they're not gonna do it until we pay the debt, of course. And then he's gonna pay anything to do with the IRS penalties.
Yes, okay.
And he said he was gonna pay the taxes, but I'm saying that I will pay mine if they just tell me what six thirty sevens is. Besides self, I'm will, I'll, I wanna be paid all because of him doing the shed, but I'll, I'll let that go and I'll pay mine. Now, okay, so I'll be responsible for six thirty seven only taxes. And that's the only thing I'm responsible for as of right now, correct?
Is, is that, are you agreeing with this? You're agreeing, you're, you're agreeing to. Then you need to get a lawyer.
And all my mom and dad's debts, electric and water and sewage are about to be taken out before April first.
I really did do that and they messed up, they changed hair, just still look my dad's junior on it.
You signed dad's name. Well, you signed your name under dad's social. I've already told him to take the pole out and he didn't listen to me.
Yeah, I feel like.
Get a lawyer.
Be a lawyer.
Sure, you gonna agree on a lawyer here today?
Nora, which one you say, but.
I can't recommend one, that's why I gave you a list of several.
What are they again?
I'll have to. There's Jim Smith, uh, I'm not gonna say some attorneys that you deal with regularly, but with the state's annual state. Jason sites, Nelson Michael, Pete Frager Millicent, um. John Akey.
Jason sites would be good, Robbie.
Oh, I said him first, because he, she had already. Right, Charlie's deceased. Charlie Smith deceased. There's a Jim Smith.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't matter.
You wanna go with Smith or what?
That would be fine, whatever one you want.
Well, then we'll do Smith.
Now, we're not gonna have any more arguments, are we?
That's her.
Everything's gonna be settled so you can have Christmas dinner together? Easter dinner. I was giving you some time. Okay, if you, that's pretty well settled itself then. If guys still want it.
That is what's under recording now, remember? Anything I'm responsible for is mine. And mom and dad's names go be cleared. That's all I wanted, sir. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Y'all have a good one.
I just take, I like seeing you get along.
Believe it or not, I love our house, sweetie, I love it.
I think what we had here is failure to communicate. I know, Rod, I know, all right, uh. Amendment to the engineer contract for the health department, we've already. Yeah, and uh commission office administrative assistant.
Wait a minute, we got a grant here.
I'm going by the. That's all right. All right, Luke, what's this office administrative assistant?
That's just, you guys interviewed and approved Cassandra, but just to be on the official agenda, approved. Uh Cassandra's hiring.
Oh, okay.
With the start date of yesterday. Hiring of Cassandra with the start date yesterday.
I second that.
And I approve that also.
It's Pleitez, P L E I T E Z. And it's Cassandra with a K.
Oh, is her name still?
And Jason, do you send them?
Okay, L A P C funding.
Um, this was, L A P C gets grant funding every year, however, they don't have enough money in their account to cover the grant. So like this year, we took some money out of L A P C and then I bought other stuff out of general county and then we reimbursed general county. It's just kind of like, it's an accounting nightmare. Um, we'd love to have a one-time four thousand dollar contribution, just so that account has enough. To cover expenses as they come. Now, if you don't wanna do it, it's not gonna hurt anything, this next job to do the same thing, I'll just take money out of general county. Which reimbursed general county when the grant check comes, but like. It's kinda confusing for Lauren and them, cause like our first check, she put it to general county, I'm like, no, 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 that one maybe was supposed to go to the L A P C fund. And then the next check came and she texted like, no, that one isn't for general county. So it's, it's just to clear up any future confusion, so all reimbursement checks would go back to L A P C. But again, if it doesn't happen, no one's gonna be like bankrupt, we can still operate, it's just. Really makes it easier from a clerical standpoint for the L A P C, for me.
And what is L A P C?
The local emergency planning commission, Dutch is a member of it, that's one of his assigned boards.
You need four, not two, you need four.
We need four, cause I think we have one and this year's grant is gonna be five. So.
But what do you wanna?
I would like you all, and literally you're transferring money from one county fund to another county fund. Um, but I would like four thousand dollars to be deposited, put into L A P C's, we have enough to cover our grant costs and then just reimburse. It's a one-time thing, we'll never need it again.
When the grant comes in, it'll be, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, cause what happens is.
You put the money.
We get the grant every year, it's like one of those almost guaranteed things. And then we spend the money, but we have to spend it from different places, because L A P C doesn't have enough. And then we get reimbursed, but if we had enough to just spend it out of L A P C, we could just reimburse L A P C. So they would always have the account balance they need, but right now they don't.
Okay, what's your thoughts, Jared?
So you're saying the money's already there in the general. You're, you're, you're moving it from one fund to another fund, like it's still a share.
Fund are we moving it from?
You're moving from general county.
That is the check that we cut, we check, that's the checks. Okay.
Yes.
I say it's not when it requires the three signatures.
Yeah, and the tax office does, I guess, it's such a small account, I don't know, we've always done, like, when I took over as director, they gave me a check from L A P C. So. They actually have a debit card too. But the sheriff's office does write it.
So you're saying the one check that you received came into the general fund and we're just moving it back a little?
So as we make expenditures, we file for reimbursements. The first set of reimbursements did come from L A P C, so it went back to L A P C. The second set of reimbursement was computers for the E O C that L A P C didn't have money for. So it goes to general county, because I bought the stuff out of general county. But if we, L A P C had the money, we would just buy it out of L A P C and reimburse it.
It doesn't.
Basically, you just leave the money in the, in the account as a cushion. Yes.
So we're not constantly borrowing from general county and reimbursing. I'll make a motion to do that. I second and I approve that option. Okay, now comes up the grant for the, the dog.
So usually I wouldn't put something this simple on the agenda, however, so this is, these people came in from like. Connecticut or something. They're the ones who gave us the five hundred dollar grant, just because um they provided Missy with a bunch of equipment. Ali kind of connected with them, it's not working with them, they just gave her a ton of tools. Um, but they have money to. Assist shelters in becoming no kill shelters. The. Reason I'm talking about this one is because this twenty five hundred dollars isn't, it would come to the county. But it's so like, if Missy has a cat, she can give the cat rescue fifty dollars to take the cat. It's to help other agencies. Right, it's to encourage other agencies to take an animal they typically wouldn't take. Um, so twenty five hundred dollars is just the starting point, they said they can absolutely give us more. We're also looking at like the stay neuter release, the catch neuter release programs. They have tons of funding for that, um, but we've been trying to do what we can to help out animal control, just like the twenty two thousand dollar grant we got for their facility. Um, this is a really cool program, however, we're cutting checks to other nonprofits for it, so like.
Okay, so the money's in general county, like we're going to. I guess, is she gonna have an application, she's gonna have an invoice from them, like?
I guess it would be just the typical rescues she works with, so it would be like. Friends of feline and ferals, like if she gives them a cat, she can give them fifty dollars that goes with them taking that cat. So it's just a sport, the same thing with humane society, if they take a dog, she can give them fifty dollars for taking that dog. That's literally what.
Well, almost have to have an invoice, that's because if she had a cat on, let's say, Friday. And then she has to wait till she goes to the next meeting to get the check, you know, to press to get that fifty dollars, you know?
Well, my plan was to do like a purchase order kind of thing, just, it's only a little bit of money, but basically just send them in, like. You guys come one check a month, they're not gonna expect fifty dollars from the cat now. But just like, she can tell me she sent four animals, friends, feline and ferals, and I can send them, it says. Four cats went through, can we send this amount to?
But they can probably even invoice.
Yeah, yeah, we could do however you guys wanna do that.
So then you report back to these people?
Yes, and that is the whole M O U. Trust me, I do a lot of grants, um, and that is the simplest agreement, um. I've ever looked at, it's one page all in, um, so it's. But I wanted to ask, because we are cutting checks to other agencies, the money doesn't stay here, but.
It won't be to any individuals.
Absolutely not, we, I mean, I guess it technically could be, but we absolutely wouldn't do that, it would have to be to the nonprofits.
And the nonprofit can do it wherever they want.
Right, it's just, we're giving them this money to take the cat, I mean, that's to, or to take the dog, and it's. And really, we just thought it would be, these organizations already take them. But we don't give them any support and this costs us literally nothing, like we'll just expend the twenty five hundred dollar to help them out.
I make a motion, we partner with Best Breach Animal Society in uh giving out. Animals to nonprofit shelters. I'll second that.
And then also, is this, the president signed this M O U?
Yep, and all of our presidents are, and I agree with that also. Okay.
Anything else you might wanna add?
No, that's everything. And I'll just, you guys are okay with us working with Missy to decide what the incomes will be?
Yeah, she knows what.
Yeah.
All right, New Creek Volunteer Fire Department Radio Grant Assistant Request.
They, they emailed this to me, um, I actually emailed it to everybody, all, all three of us. Uh. The New Creek Fire Department went through and they, they got nine hundred and ninety nine thousand. Six hundred dollar grant through FEMA to replace portable mobile radios. For New Creek, Ridgely, Wallford and Dry Downs Fire Departments. Radios are purchased not only to improve radio communications in the county, but also. Uh mutual aid agencies that we did not have direct and easy communication with, without a patch. Uh, the radios have worked extremely well so far and all been delivered and installed and are currently in use. Uh, they have small mix up, mix up in the project, they've been on using a local vendor. To work for Alligating County to program installed radios at little, no cost. Uh, as a favor for them and then, and then given the cost savings, the committee chose to purchase some extra batteries. And spare microphones for the radios. Also, these items were also purchased for multi-charging systems. Um, that also condition the refreshment of batteries for prolonged use. After all the items were purchased, we found out the person who was going to install and program the radios backed out. They had to contact G Technologies in Hampshire County to install and program the radios. This adding an additional thirty eight thousand to the grant. Um, when they've used up all the available grant funding from FEMA, each department paid their minimum agreed amounts. For their share of the grant, each department had also agreed to pay an additional two thousand extra with New Creek paid twenty five hundred. But with all, with all this, we're still eight thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars and sixty cents short. Uh, they wanted to reach out to see if there was any additional excess levy funds available to help us. With this, or if the county had any extra funds in the budget to assist. I know it's a long shot with everyone's budget running tight, but I wanted to reach out and ask. Uh, this is from Dustin Antire, he's fire chief of New Creek. Um, so. Anyway. Access levy funds, is there any excess levy, any money in the excess levy fund?
You asked me about that?
I did.
And I did not do anything else with it. I don't know what I was doing at the time, but apparently it didn't stick with me, I'm sorry. So, I don't have that figure, but I don't know, um, it is gonna benefit all departments?
Three.
Or just those?
Yeah.
So you, to use the excess. Or you mean to give every department their excess? But then New Creek's gonna have to use their excess towards that, so.
Yeah.
There's a, there's not much money in the all county fund. I think there's only like nineteen hundred in that. In all county.
I don't think that, that means, what do you mean, the all county?
The all county fund, we get those checks from the state and then we distribute them equally amongst all fire departments.
All the fire protection. The fire protection.
Yes, probably all county fire protection.
Yeah, okay.
So it's like nineteen hundred and that.
Okay, but we don't know what's in the excess levy.
But even if we do an excess check, you can't do one, just, you'd have to do the excess to all departments, but then those departments would have to use their excess.
Would it be on the most recent sheriff's report, cause that just.
Well, we'd have to still have to figure out the contribution. To have enough money for the contributions for this fiscal year and also enough for the first contribution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we don't completely wipe it out.
Do you wanna wait and check, see what's in there?
When do they need this?
I don't know.
He doesn't give it, he wants to know when he needs it. Or how soon they need it.
So the excess, you have to give it evenly out through all eleven departments.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then those four contribute to the, to this end.
If, yeah.
If they want to. Which would be about two thousand twenty.
I don't understand why the radio is then like going to New Creek, Ridgely.
So, the way the A F G regional grants work is there's a million dollar cap on it, hence the nine hundred ninety nine thousand six hundred dollars. Um, so if you included all of the fire departments, you would blow that cap out of the water. So they only included enough departments. So that they would be at the cap, but still benefiting multiple departments. Is that right, Roger? That's my understanding of why they do it that way.
And didn't Ridgely do something over there? They got all new radios as well.
Same thing. It's the same one.
It's the same one.
Cause all four departments paid one grant writer to do what's called a regional grant.
Oh, and New Creek, Ridgely, Wallford.
Yeah.
They're nice radios.
They're super expensive radios.
Can't give to one department.
That's exactly what I was saying, you're thinking.
Yes.
How much do you guys want?
Eight thousand five hundred and eighty.
Fair is fair.
I, I, and I know that's coming. I know that.
Agreed. You know me.
Well, and fair is fair. You're right. This, I think we'll wait to see what's in the excess levy fund.
Yeah.
See what we got in there.
I've been focusing on a bunch and I just.
And then maybe we could check, see how much.
You want me to let Steve and Dusty know where you were emailing?
I wanna know.
And ask them when they need it by.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's yesterday. I mean.
Oh, I'm sure.
G Tech's a small business, like thirty eight thousand dollars is a substantial.
Yeah.
A substantial amount of money to them. Like, they've got several employees, but that's not going to be like a small, they're gonna expect payment relatively quickly.
Maybe if there's any excess money in the sheriff's department, you think they could make?
You can have it all, sir. Joel leaves a dime over, they can have it.
All right, we'll, we'll check on that and bring it up to next meeting. Okay. Great cross month. We had that. Proclamation here earlier. U P S systems and nine one one.
Yeah, um, this is, I was gonna talk to you all about nine one one buying a new U P S versus buying a charger, but. Um, after we did the salary stuff and all of that, I'm just, wanna go ahead and recommend the new charger, which is nine hundred. I've got, I've got, if you wanna be these two things, um. We just replaced u- batteries in one of our UPSs, um, and now where the charges has gone bad and it's causing some major issues. It's nine hundred ninety two dollars to replace the charger. Oh, yeah, I'm out of those funds, but I, the reason I put it on the agenda was because. I was gonna buy a new U P S for fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. But we're gonna do the charger, um, but since it's here and I didn't do a P O, you guys go ahead and list formally every day.
You wanna prove to the, how much money?
Nine hundred ninety two dollars and eighteen cents.
Now here, a motion to approve. I make a motion, we approve that.
I second Steve, I approve that also, okay.
Um, I'm gonna jump on that one too. So with yesterday's issue was the power. Um, I think for, for the most part, it could be UPS box in my office held up, uh, the UPS box on the server does need to be replaced. And, um, Bob with, um. Advantage.
Advantage.
Advantage, I wanted to say Alligating, I don't know why, advantage. Um, he needs a dedicated outlet. Uh, or he knows he should have a dedicated uh, circuit, excuse me, not outlet, a circuit for that, because. There, everything in that server room is plugged into the same circuit and it takes everything out.
So I spoke to Ron and, and he said each of those outlets is on an individual circuit and there should be plenty of power. So I spoke to Ron a couple of weeks ago and Ron said, whatever the issue was that day, it's been addressed and the company just needed to come back and take that off the extension cord. So maybe I need to get with.
So each outlet is on its own circuit?
That is my understanding of how the server rooms wired, is each outlet is on its own circuit.
Okay. So they need to get all their stuff plugged into just the one. We need to, they really need to look at that, but then also the Truelight is been the problem.
Okay, is that locals or advantages?
I do not know. Chris was here today and he did not know, but.
You know what sucks? Right after, like, you called, I had literally just sent the cable and got home with one of those to return. From nine one one, like, two hours before the power issue, could've just kept it. Maybe forty, they're five hundred dollars a piece. If you're wondering what they cost.
So we need to replace one.
Well, when it serves the whole camp, I mean, the whole upstairs went out. I mean, it lasted, well. It lasted for a while, not exactly the point it shut down, but we lost phones and internet and everything and then it took, what, two and a half, three hours?
You lost the surge protector down in the magistrate court side, controls all the door locks. In any annex building.
What time did we finish? Sixty thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay, and the lights went out at a quarter to three.
The surge protectors.
Yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Well, apparently P three must've got notification, cause they came and fixed it yesterday.
Yeah, that all came around last night. I went annex. To terrorist building. The fun guy, I called the police, you may have to go down and take care of probation.
Yeah, we got terrorist permission to go and, but he went in, I didn't, I got terrorist permission for them to go in and then Cory came in for probation and.
Okay, uh, I can go and order a U P S for a server from Global.
So we need more than one? Like, you gotta go through the whole building, check everybody's?
Well, I think, like I said, pretty much all of them in my office, because we shut the computers down and then we shut the UPS boxes down because of so much stuff going away. Um, I'm not sure, Joe, did you, or all the UPS boxes, okay, in your office? Anything beaten?
Not everything.
And those come from Walmart.
Shill's office? Okay, one.
The ones near guys' office.
Shill's office, okay?
That's where I bought the nine one one, but we don't have to order those.
Okay.
Okay, so that should be just a bit.
Actually, I've got four spares in nine one one at the moment, cause we just put in two big UPSs.
I always cut the spare in my office, so I can swi- switch out.
Oh.
But I'll actually need a second one for a public terminal in the back, since my public terminals aren't next to each other now, but.
Can you remind me tomorrow? I'll just give you one for nine one one, cause I've literally got them stacked in my office. Now I have this one. I'm not getting them all, but.
Just one, I need.
So we don't give it anyway, then?
Well, we're gonna have to buy a new one for the server.
Which should only be like five hundred bucks though.
There's a cyber power on the bottom and the one above it was the Truelight.
Okay.
Cyber power, and then Bob's went in the cyber power, so the Truelight must be global.
Yeah.
And how much are we looking at for that?
The ones I just bought in nine one one were five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars a piece. So those are rack mounted UPS, essentially, in my network.
How many of them were you buying this one?
Are these?
No, I'm giving Lauren one for.
Yeah, that's a small, we're talking about just for the PC. He's, we're talking now for the, the whole server. Can you just change the batteries in those, or is that?
I don't know. Anytime I've ever done hardware refreshes in nine one one, they've just replaced the whole.
Yeah, I don't think a small one's batteries can be changed out.
The small ones, you definitely can.
Yeah.
Any of them?
The big ones, I don't think you can. Yeah, we do change them, the small ones, they're not, with the batteries made in the zone. I don't know, I don't quite know where you do it, but they def- Tim used to do it all the time.
Oh, yeah, I used to.
But do we need to make a motion, or do you just make?
Well, we had a whole bunch of spare on the shelf and. Playing mountain, they were all damaged or something.
All, I think they would've thrown out, would've been bad. There were a bunch down there that were marked bad. Shouldn't be, I don't know what they threw out. Um, I'll have them send me a quote, if you guys will just approve up the like. Seven hundred dollars, I'm not sure if that one's paid, but if they, if there's five hundred dollars, it's in my network room, I can't imagine why it couldn't be.
I guess you do have to figure out who, who belongs to whether.
Believe it, if it's global or advantage, I'll just order one from Global and one.
And I make a motion for eight, for eight hundred dollars. Towards these uh, backup systems.
And that's where the server grew.
For the server lane. I'll second that and I approve that also.
And I already, I've just emailed Global, so I'm sure Matt will send me a quote tomorrow.
No kidding, you gotta move a portion of. Of your salaries here to expand and.
Yeah.
This is what we talked about at the budget session on Friday.
Yeah, and so we've already done it for next fiscal year. You guys will have to approve nine one one's budget. Um, but I'd like you to do it effective April first, so that Aileen and I can go into the M S R S. Sorry, it being taking half of Aileen and I's salaries out of nine one one. And I wouldn't expect, like, we wouldn't expect a contribution for April, so. For June, that won't be a problem to me.
Any, you guys got any questions?
So would you divide in, actually, the half of nine one one in a quarter and a quarter? Quarter to, what's that mean, a quarter to seven hundred?
Effective April first.
Yeah.
Yes. But only for these months, to be clear, not, not back payment, clear back to July first.
Starting April one.
Starting April one, yes. I know how that goes. Next thing I'll know, nine one one will be.
I make a motion that we uh, move the portions of, with the salary from.
And Aileen.
And Aileen's salary from. Um, the county to nine one one.
I'll second that, approve that also.
Okay, that's all we have. I got one question. How come we don't have any states?
Oh, we're here.
We're not on the agenda.
That's probably the next page.
No, it's not on the agenda, all affected.
The county's generations of states.
We're there on the last page.
Appointments.
Oh, you got it on, oh, I didn't look on the last page.
It's a three pager today.
Count. Cause I, did you always do, there was generations in states always on the first one?
Well, I think we've been doing it, my friend Raj, you've been moving down.
Yeah, because.
Okay.
We started doing the bill stand.
Cause I looked on the first page and they wasn't there and I.
Are we doing reports before you guys do all that?
Yeah, do your reports.
Okay. Um, so this. Kevin Artis, who used to be with Landis and now is with W D Mason, W B Mason stopped in today. Um, I guess Landis sold, Landis's prices were pretty high, which is why we had started buying from Liberty, cause we did an annual bid. However, they have a sale on coffee paper, thirty dollars a case. He is bringing me a case tomorrow to take to the offices and check. Uh, but that is eighteen dollars cheaper than what we are paying a case right now, and we ordered a hundred and eighty cases in the last fourteen months. Um. If everyone's happy with the paper, I would like your permission to go and order a hundred and fifty of those cases, cause it's eighteen dollars cheaper per case.
Do we have a place to store?
We put it in the shed at nine one one, cause it's climate controlled and we can. Yeah, um, so as long as everyone's happy with the paper, but I just wanted your permission, cause that is gonna be a big one, but he just stopped in today. As far as other supplies, I'm gonna look and see.
And the total price would be?
Um, it's thirty times a hundred, so three thousand times, so fifty, four thousand hundred dollars.
Does I make a motion to approve that, or?
I'll make a motion, we approve that. If the paper is.
Yes, cause I did buy some barbed paper the other day and it was real cheap.
It was bad. It was jammed and fake copy or something.
He told me this is decent paper.
And I agree with that also.
Um. I will need to send a letter to the retirement board saying that we are making a correction to Aileen and I's salaries. Um. Can you all go ahead and make a motion, I can send that letter and Roger can sign.
Make a motion, send a letter to the retirement board that yours and Aileen's salary will be half out of nine one one.
I second that, I approve that also.
I'll get that out.
Fuck this.
You all.
No. Craig, if I'm wrong, but I think you told, you, you wrote a letter for, how much they call it?
Yeah, I already did that. That was a simple.
Yeah.
Support letter, I just sent it. Well, project center, we already talked about that. Um, we did get Joe's vehicles. I haven't got them, um. Retitled jet, but I, I assume you guys would be okay with me taking them into healthy and just getting the logos put on, since it was only ninety bucks a piece, they're over there. Um. Uh, I think that's all I have, if I find something where you're looking through stuff.
The, um, March eleventh. Was that the Ridgely basketball? That's all, we also have county commission, have they doing?
Yes, sure.
Um. March twelfth, uh, the Merrill County training that we had, there at the sheriff's office.
Which was very nice.
It was very good.
Yeah. Um, and then after that, I went through the courthouse for, see, the electrical switch over. Um, March thirteenth at the F F A ham and bacon egg sale. March seventeenth, we had budget meeting. And March. And let's see, March twentieth, building commission. March twenty first, we have budget meeting again. Uh, yesterday was at, um. Alton, um. Fire department meeting, and then I went on over to Short Gap after that.
Uh, since last evening.
All three of you were at the employee meeting?
Yes, we were. All three of us at the courthouse employee meeting. During core training. Hmm?
You're talking about the core training?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I was, I was on Zoom on an on track meeting on that Thursday. Um, Monday, the sixth, seventeenth. Met up at the Ford Garage and. With the guys from three, with the person from greedy and these, a couple of the other committee members, you got a picture done. And presented the check to pay for the vehicle repair. I was also here for the budget meeting. Uh, had a farm land protection meeting and a mineral county planning commission meeting. I was here for the construction progress meeting. But there was a lot of things was in between, but I can't think of.
Think of it. I don't, never seen anything like it at all. Okay, I was.
Huh?
Hmm.
Meeting tomorrow. Meeting today. Don't you forget it. Uh, I was at the core training down the quarter, I was on the twelfth, hey, Joel, they, they got a training for the law enforcement too. Did he, did he, you talked to him about that?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember if you did or not. I knew what I was talking.
We spoke to him about what he currently has, as well as looking into adding additional things that benefit us here, agreed.
That sounds good, so. And I was at, also was at the hand, mineral county hand baking egg show, and I did learn one thing, Jason's too tight to buy any eggs.
I mean, I didn't.
You think that's bad? I was so tight, I didn't even go.
And I didn't pay two hundred dollars for them kids, was that bad of a price for eggs, did you? So they was nice looking eggs. Okay, I'm just.
They all taste the same.
And also, I was at the budget meeting on the seventeenth. I had a region eight, planning and development council meeting on the twentieth. Uh, I had a Gideon's dinner that I was invited to. I went to the Gideon's dinner, uh, in Landis up at Petersburg. Uh. Uh, see, where it was at the budget meeting, of course, on the twenty first. I had a health department meeting, a Zoom meeting with region eight in, uh. And the engineer, Batista, on the twenty first. And we dealt with that issue today, so. And I attended the sex program here at the commissioner in today, two o'clock.
And how's it, the C E?
C E D S.
I ask you every single time.
Yeah.
Yes, I know that today.
I didn't know about that. I didn't know what that meant.
Expert.
But it's different, it's different than the one that you had, but uh.
No, it's not the same one at the general.
But the budget meeting, you mentioned it.
I had development authority meeting.
Yeah, I've told her. Yeah. He told you guys, you only struck on two meetings.
Yeah.
I can't, no, I can't, you know, but one bit.
I do remember something, but I forgot. Uh, on the seventeenth, I had a last meeting and. We had it at Short Gap Fire Hall, and after the last meeting, I was out with the guys, with the, there was people from Ford Ash B M. Short Gap there doing a training, uh, Dr. Kervos was there, there was a couple of other fire departments.
Short gap there doing a training, uh, Dr. Kervos was there, there was a couple other private departments there, just out there watching what they were doing. The person and. Several made a comment, it's the first time they've ever had a drill or a training, and there was a county commissioner and a medical director there. And I was kind of impressed by that.
Dan. You got anything to report?
Uh, there's more on the budget and minutes.
I see you got, you're starting.
Start.
Minutes.
I'm working my way back.
You're getting the minutes done, it's it's, well, it's what's been going on down there, I'm surprised if someone's up there.
Sally's, you know, had only a couple weeks to do the audit, she has to have it done by the thirty first.
She's in here working today, she's gotta help her.
Yes, and uh, she came down like, it's in a box somewhere, just give me a bit.
Matter of fact, they was here just a couple minutes ago.
But I'm sure she's still here, she has that done by the end of the week. Ready for bills, the states and donations though. Oh, I see, donations.
This is one bill, Ron.
Yes.
This current window, but the next, next cell phone bill will reflect uh the refund. And the charge.
Oh, with P card stuff.
Did you want a copy of the proclamations or anything?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Yeah.
We used to run those, but we just don't have these states anymore.
Yeah. Actually, some of these sensors, sensors.
Oh, hey, now, okay.
Got you. How many more do you, we gotta pay first. Oh, um, we're pretty close to getting the contract, I left alone, and actually, if you open, you can see, pay ups in there. The, you're the second page. Oh, third page, sorry. So. So total contracts.
How much? And when we're out, man, sure.
No, we're in the projects, son.
Project.
Yeah, um, I do need, actually, I don't want to, we, we, I need to go over something that with you all, um, so I just see, kind of see and. You know. How long we're paid? Um, and then, depends on how many squirrels we see, and um.
Many what?
Any squirrels get distracted.
Oh.
Typically, it's not the subject at hand that takes forever.
I noticed, I noticed.
They are whispering people, you are camera, so.
There's no, he was holding it, kind of like that.
You bring anything?
Oh, yeah.
Like, that's not the first one you guys have. Personally, I wish I knew how to do that, that's what I actually retirement do right there.
You have any more rubber band?
No, I need to start writing something, I've been breaking every single time.
No, I never asked you all, but I changed the letterhead from the city of your home address, and what your district and said, I assume anybody's okay with that. Cause two or three of you have eyes or addresses, and it looks like you have no one that runs this. So I put.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Just this.
Yes.
No, I'm sure.
You guys want initial all, that's up to you.
Yeah. Bottom one, right by.
Free organization.
One night charge. A lot of hotels knew that.
I have them all, yes, all has them. The as well, them and second one, the engineer, and actually, Cassandra has them, I was gonna put them in the spreadsheet, you all came up with them.
I did see her going that, didn't I?
Yes. For first two days, and it's been um slightly overwhelming, but I think she's a good dude, yes. Hmm. So, and all of master. If you have all of them, I don't have to. Um, I thought they had told me, my master and the others, but they haven't, so all of them actually registered on the list. All the other. I mean, oh, yes, three years one, which is like. They got four of us, okay? You, well, you want me to have one for that long, cause I think you guys don't need it. I mean, I've got the great grand master for access, like, yeah, but um, if you want, they probably wouldn't hurt to have it, just so we have it. Just to me, it's right now, I'll, I'll give you more for your little.
We don't need to sign.
Uh, no, no, right.
Man, that brain freeze will have to hold them out. And I guess that was your doctor.
I don't, I don't know, really.
I wouldn't. I know you said, but.
Was it a supplemental or anything?
I just. No, it was uh. I will call. And uh, it looks like it was originally twenty thousand dollar tax, but I'm not looking through a proper.
I bet somebody had a heart attack when they had that.
I know, I would have.
Okay, and it's, it's just more straight ahead, people being called, okay, the ones who does the carpet, yes. Okay.
Uh, that's the one twenty twenty three bill that's in there, uh, there was another bill in the system that they paid. So that we can't double bill, and so that's not that one's in there.
That's for nine, some dollars.
Whatever's playing. Cause they already had a bill in the system, so we had, we had to get rid of, the one they, they already paid it. The twenty three.
They already paid it.
They already paid.
The one.
The one twenty three, that's a book that bill they paid.
I'm surprised that was for twenty twenty three.
Yeah, is it a supplemental?
It's, yeah.
Okay, so. It was probably made not like in somebody else's name, and they found it afterwards, cause that happens a lot. Um, they'll come in and say it's in their name, we can't find the bill, we make it, and then it's in their boyfriend's name or whatever. Yeah, see, it was on the girlfriend's tax bill. And I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Have you done it, Danny? You, you want to do it, or you?
No, I was just kind of skimming.
It's something I thought I'd remember last.
I wouldn't use to put the honor raises on the back page, I never noticed that.
You know, for a couple months.
I haven't. Just used to go into them and then I never really looked. And I couldn't see, I didn't really look in the back page, that's why I didn't see them.
So Lauren, on the M S R S thing, Eileen and I will have to pay. Back the additional contributions of the percentage difference. Um, I guess I can talk to him about that, so she.
We're gonna start April first, or then we're held.
She said, so. They are gonna allow its entry, but they're moving for that, the salaries are even worse, but they are back in our volume. Is like, they're gonna send us along as involved in this. And also, what may tax, whatever, or activity with the retirement, which that, you know, what have been out of town during. But it depends where, I think I probably mind, like, there's. I, I see what it is, I mean, I follow it, cause you make it like you, you know, it also.
You saw this in the state, but then.
Well, state, we, we have this, those centers not going to be finishing, I mean, verify. They send us here, I'm just, I said, one back, they're verified.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay.
But yeah, what if you did difference?
Right, yeah, cause that's, it's only the two or two and a half percent, so it's not like, if it were eight and a half percent, like, yeah, we're gonna.
Technically, we might not even have to send any verification, because they have the salary, and they have the A amount, yes.
Right, okay.
So, it's they figure that.
Have you attended consolidated public retirement, the office? It's much nicer than you'd expect.
Where at?
Consolidated Public Retirement Board, that was a super nice.
Ultra often.
Hmm. They have this huge rock perception desk, and really fancy.
Nice to know, they're using my money.
Yeah, yeah, it was them and D N R in that building. Really comfortable chairs. Don't mention them.
Oh, yeah. Actually, comfortable chairs. Those five thousand dollar chairs. Built in a storage office. When we, the big white chairs we were sitting in. We want five thousand dollars feet around the conference.
Now, not, not mineral county, not mineral county. Which has been seventy, just bought Amazon chairs for like two hundred dollars.
Sitting in the meeting, I'm like, man, these are the most comfortable chairs I've seen, and so I took a picture, and I thought, well, maybe we could port some here. No way, five thousand piece.
Yeah, no, Kevin and Stephanie don't even have matching chairs in conference rooms, so. And they're too cheap to buy a meeting out, they still use a camera, pull them down.
Yes, I don't know, they what? Do you look at these states? Jason? He's. Not the.
Oh, it's match, match, oh.
I know you're reading, it's not on the, you guys wanna do these?
Yeah.
Well, and now, two thousand. Well, and now, to cause a wrestler, it's had one. Top place.
Did we talk about doing just ten sports, or we talked about maybe up there?
Probably involved in the role we talked about doing, and for all state championships.
For all states, and that would be. He's brought up also about academic. I don't know what's going to do tech.
I don't, I don't know how we're going to determine.
I don't know either, either.
I mean, I just. I saw it, and I'm like, well, I haven't done it yet. Um, United and Swingle, that's his second year running, state champion, that's, he's only a sophomore, he won state championship twice. Yeah, that's, so, I just don't know that, no, right?
I've done it, and then they talk to your new bill. I didn't realize who he, his parents was, while I sit there and talk to him. You know his parents? Oh, no, knew, yes. I didn't know his mother. I knew his dad, I know a lot of his, knew his granddad. Uh, John Thorne was his granddad, not the one down below us, the one in Green Line, right? Yeah. He really did. I knew his uncle and aunt, real good.
Okay, I looked them up, I'm like, hey, I know a lot of his family.
What has been thrown off that way?
Yeah, he's, his, his granddad lived up to, blow rings indoor down, going run. I can just reread these notes of all the way. These hands, she's on. Yeah. Like one, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Let me just gas screen, where can you get down the Creebergie?
I'm going to the Kaiser EMS, I need to put the appointment of the person, the new person, and the person going out. Have that after the bag, so. In the term, or Wilson.
Oh, I think the most updated, um, boards and commission was.
Yeah, I need to do enough to get it worked.
The website's way out of date.
Oh, yeah.
Any, any amateur, they have the calendar.
Two or three of them coming. Oh, I never updated that.
Not until June.
That's what it means, it's summer.
Yeah, yeah, we have several boards, we have a point.
You're like, I'm slacking on so many names.
We're gonna have to find some broad to get through this.
Well, Lauren, actually, just one person, this isn't typically all one president.
I, I, I'll be surprised if law, because Tom's definitely having a bad day. I've all, our Tom was good guy, I'd like to. Did you hear that speech effect thing, because we were jamming for them?
Did you get that speech effect thing? They weren't for a picture, they're not.
Does that sound artificial?
No, it was a couple.
Hi, boys.
Yeah.
I was in a hurry, I was in a hurry.
I didn't read the.
I was determined, I was gonna get these today.
The, it's A H T C.
I was, I was going through my notes.
Not A H A C, B and G C.
A H E C?
Yeah.
Yeah, I never even had a chance to watch the video with it, I would just.
I don't have a signed copy of the meeting list.
Do any of you have a signed copy of the meeting list I could scan?
Or back and stack the papers in my office.
Why, no, I.
What meetings are you talking?
We're all on twenty twenty.
Commission meeting?
Yeah, we don't have much data.
I've only had twenty twenty.
I've got. I've got.
I can email you one, but then the signatures, I'll scan it, so.
Like, either way, it's fine.
Scan one, because, no, it's the one that I said to you, I don't remember if it's a signature or not.
Yeah, and I guess I did notice that when I'm with the Zoom link on, but I just didn't even think about it, so I've got the twenty twenty four meeting list on there.
Uh, once you get the, with all committees and stuff, they're together, like.
Oh, yeah, that'll be, Lauren will give, can give you a copy, but I don't.
And our employees too.
Yes, so Cassandra is actually going to, um, update the phone directory, and then we're gonna send all the changes to all, she does that, I will.
I'm ready to map it.
Okay, well, I know, I think other places need a, but we'll see, um, but she's gonna, well, the actual, like, list. She's gonna update that, she's gonna go all this off, it'll fix everything, that's right, um, so.
But the only meeting that's changed is the one in November, isn't it?
Um.
Because it falls on the twenty fifth.
Um.
Fourth Tuesday, I think the rest of them should.
Not within the list, because there was a couple of days that we had, um.
And actually, I probably should put the minutes on there, too, which could flash out of those.
Oh, I'll be in Canada on the April eighth meeting. But I should be able to zoom in.
Where? So moving to New Hampshire, not, you're not gonna.
No, I'll be gone the whole week.
Going to Canada for a mission trip, or?
No, uh, uh, leadership conference for, for the ministry. There'll be a, about a hundred and fifty of us there.
Well, the April fifteenth at one as well, you all have to be here late eleven. Right, need at least two of you, and you don't come out. No exceptions. That day's a must. That's, you ought to understand that, not me. We do it at one o'clock, so Roger can get out, watch for turkey season.
That's right. People first, they, they should time you up.
Oh, he turkeys these months on twenty second.
Yeah. But, I don't see what time I have it.
Yeah, we have it in the, I have it in the calendar.
I'm ready to send everybody the new list of appointment dates.
It's the late eleven, right? At one o'clock?
One o'clock, one. I decided with the approval of the budget, I'm gonna go back in, um, two million persons, I'm gonna go back, and then I'll get the publication ready, go.
I'm almost done.
That wasn't a hurry, so I'm sure there's some typos, I had to look over and make sure, because I'm like that about when I, who's made the motion, it says mag the motion. But that, check that, catch it, because mag the word, although it catches V, the E goes on, I go E T H E, and that is not a word, the spell check is not.
A lot of towns, I'll raise that in my phone, and it'll change a couple of that.
Oh, you definitely have to print before you hit send.
Well, I don't always do that.
I don't often do it either. Best of a hurry.
Yeah, and then you'll get it.
Oh, crap, whoops, what am I saying?
Or my daughter-in-law got into my phone, and if I say certain words right before I send it, it changes it. And, uh, it's like she changed everything to butt, B U T T.
Oh, man.
As I, I, I found a shot, yeah, she can do it automatically, I couldn't figure out how that been changed now, so I, I figured it was her. And, um, yeah. There, he's still reading.
I've thought about putting one of the AI mods on Zoom, see how it does in transcriptions, but.
Well, we do, uh, with our Ministry in Richmond, that does a great job, and I got some, he sent me the links, so I, so he uses. But he said, I wish I squirrels were better to do, I wish the squirrel. So, going to have a nation right now. Squirrel, yeah, he said we could do that real quick, because we didn't know how many squirrels was out there running around, oh.
I'm, I make a motion, I mean, except the, the minutes from. Part of the left, I can, I can say. And one first.
A second and.
I approve that also, you have a list of generations.
Make a motion, accept the generations.
Second about.
And the states. And I make a motion, accepting states.
I second that, and I pay the one. And accounts pay, you know, the accounts payable.
I second that, so you want to see.
I was just making sure he was known with the tax paper, you don't forget. I'll make a motion, we.
Pay the accounts payable. I second that.
We, and I know the case yours.
Second you.
Yes. And, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.